So I will call this meeting to a halt. This is November 2nd, March 12th, 2025, Men and Select Board Meeting. Joint meeting did the Finance Committee, do you have a forum here?
As usual, we don't, then we will.
Okay. All right. So.
Yeah, I know, the standard has been about four minutes into this meeting.
So just, we have three select boards in the noise here. Our four of the other two members are not able to attend, so they are not remote either. And so everyone knows this meeting is being recorded. And if you could please stand and join me for the. Thank you. Okay, so this is another one of our budget presentation meetings. So our boards, please. And we have, so we have several different places here to present. We do have a small number of other items. Do you want to take those out of order, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Or do we want to do those first out?
I think they'll break and take them out of order.
Okay, I mean, the other possibility is, do we want, we could wait, we could do those now since we're still waiting on a Finance Committee quorum. And that will give us a chance for those members to join before the presentations start.
We're officially a quorum.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then in that case.
All right, well, we will open the FinCon meeting at 6:32 PM. We have Jack Hodgins online, so we will have to pro-call vote. I still support taking spoiler items out.
Okay.
We can skip them.
So taking them, sorry, out of order as in like.
Doing them first.
Doing them first, obviously.
Actually taking them inwards.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so there are differences.
Whatever it is to tip off a few things.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, so we have on here some appointments. We have an appointment with the Board of Registars. So Jeremy, do you want to?
Yeah, this comes down at a recommendation from Dr. So for you all, and this is happening as well as, or sorry, the town election. So why would squeeze them this time?
Okay. I would be looking for a motion.
I move to appoint Deborah Perro to the Board of Registars to expire March 31st, 2028.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you. And then item three is a vote to authorize the police chief or his designated to assign police details for the town election. And so I would be looking for a motion there.
I move to authorize the police chief or his designated to assign the following details for 2025 calendar years. The annual town election, May 13th, have an special election that may be scheduled for the calendar year 2025.
Second.
Discussions. Right, we, this is a standard thing that we need to do for every election. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. And then we have one other small item which was added to the agenda. Jeremy, do you want to fill us in on?
Yeah, so as most of you are aware, there was a fire at 18 Gaskell Street, which has left the house unhavocable. So I know the board was made aware, but the fires didn't brief the board. There was an excellent effort from the Fire Department, folks responding from home, our people, our firefighters who were on shifts, were active at medical call at times. So we had on-call folks respond from home. And we had seven communities respond on scene and an agency providing station help. So it was really a great testament to our regional partners in terms of how end of resources and keep the fire from getting worse than it already was. And the house is still solid. So the property owner has applied for a moving permit after the site. And in that process has supplied for a temporary trailer permit to live in while while constructing that. So our bylaws require the building permits have been applied for it, which was for Board of Health to sign off on the sanitary facilities, which they have, and then for select board to grant permit to, for the individual to live in the facility. So permits for six months, would have to come back at six months to renew if that was the case. And it has to comply with all other building codes setbacks and whatnot. Building inspectors been involved throughout the entire time. Recommend since justice and just the urgency of the housing security of the local family and otherwise, probably important, I heard about it last night to get out on to today's meeting.
Thank you. All right, so I would be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the application for a temporary trailer mobile home permit application for 18 Gaskell Street.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to note that this was not part of the regional.
Yes, thank you for that, yes. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Post. Thank you. So I'm glad that we are able to help move along the process and that they don't need to wait another week. Thank you. Give your moment to do that, that's what's going on today.
While, while he's doing that, the team maestro thing.
I, I emailed World Band just now. So the legal is placed on by World Band, Jason Krueger has been working on it as it's his, he has a better vocabulary for it than I do. But yeah, I'm trying to.
So then our, our next item is budget presentations and Jeremy is going to start us off.
Yes. So I want to talk a little bit about revenue and a little bit about our expectations for what Tuesday would look like. So Tuesday, we're bringing together kind of the culmination of these discussions and talking about, talking about the ads, talk about the recommendations, talk about the requests, kind of everything together. So all of that's important in the context of what our overall revenue picture is. And I just wanted to set the expectations of both Board and Committee that we don't need to get to like the penny specificity on Tuesday. That's not, that's not what the exercise is. We are going to have movement in state aid at some point, perhaps before we get medical professional care perhaps not. And then our local receipts are good faith estimate, generally right now pretty conservative. But we can maneuver that within thousands of dollars and still stay within the realm of of reasonability and conservatism. So I, as we, as we carve and as we add and as we approve and as we have these discussions, I just want folks to go into it, not thinking we need to get down to penny level. One thing I want to talk about specifically on revenue was investment income. This is an area where, if you says far back is fiscal 2022, we've been budgeting $2,300 a year in investment revenue. And in fiscal 22, we took in $2,309 in investment. This is, this is interest on current cash. Last fiscal year, we took in $405,000 in that same line as a result of the former treasurer elector and continuing on by the current treasurer elector kind of deploying cash in a more advantageous way. So I'm not going to budget $2,300 in fiscal '26, but I'm also not going to budget $405,000 in fiscal '26. Interest rate environment is a lot different now than it was six years ago, but it's a lot, will be a lot different than it was, you know, just a year or two ago. As we see inflationary pressures, we're seeing people's rate cuts. So that's where we're going to kind of massage that number. We can talk about that more on Tuesday, what this board feels is, this committee feels is a reasonable middle ground to it. But I want to say that this budget will be balanced with more of $2,300. Budgeted interest investment. And I don't know if we normally get that much in weeds, but that's like the biggest deviation that I think we'll see from local receipts. Besides the elimination of the solid waste fees at local receipt level, that's going to be the biggest deviation I will talk about.
Thank you for that. So then are we ready?
So did I hear you correctly? We normally get 2,000 something and we have, did I hear you say 400,000?
We bought last year, this was part of our, what free cash was.
Yeah, yeah.
Their local receipts.
Oh, because our free cash was so high, the investment was significantly higher.
Uh, our free cash was so high because our return, because our actual numbers were so much higher than budget. And then, so that means in fiscal '26, the numbers will also get higher because free cash, right? We still have three, three cash part. So we budgeted 2,300 and we've collected 405,000.
Okay.
There was an active, a decision made to change investment mix.
Yep.
To be more advantageous, that generated a lot more interest, given the interest rates, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was a planned, calculated decision by the Finance Director a year ago and it paid off.
I was thinking some money markets, some cash flows, the Massachusetts municipal actual, I think I get all the answers. But in ways that previously they were in lows, you know, yield accounts, which was $2,000, moving trusts into deposit where trust and to Massachusetts moving deposit trust, gaining well over 5% risk free. Very basically, previous gap. So don't expect 405,000, but expect 112,000.
All right, great, thank you. So are we ready to move on to the budget presentations? So then we going in the order listed on the agenda, exactly, I believe everybody's here. So I would love to, I would like to invite Council on Aging Director and any other members that are joining us, if you can join us, let's see. Over. We can spread out, there's.
I'll slip over there.
Oh, okay, so yeah, we'll.
And well, Phil, if you'd like, I'd like to introduce personnel, so yes. I am Lenny Wilson, Kansas City, so it's Redford and stuff. And these are two of my seven board members. Okay, I have his co-chair on the board, who's not in his name. Then specifically, the, 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 helping with the voting this year, next to that, to go along and so they were all, we had, and the three of us. Wanted to just let you know a little bit about, you may be familiar with us, but you know, technically our mission is to serve seniors and anybody to find out what their needs are, to respond to those needs, to create programs, to promote and through the encourage unions and things like that, free access, allowing them to stay in their homes. And I thought the market, they would be young retirees, they're like, what's in for me? What am I going to do? We bought her insurance program and asked her, or some of them.
Second, the, the transition of papers got totally messed up in the, as we were moving along, I think some, some people were grabbing one and then, so I don't know what I'm saying.
I remember before.
That's a packet. Yes, that packet, that, that.
These documents were all emailed to everything. Right, they can, we can, we can collect the work as a fashion of the rights.
Thank you for emailing them over. It wasn't in an appropriate amount of time where I could digest, read or digest anything prior to the meeting.
There are some people who expect it online, have it available on revenue.
Yeah, I know, I think, I would love for us to institute a process of which at least 72 hours prior to a meeting, collateral is distributed, especially for those of us who are not in the day-to-days of everything, to be expected to just drink from a fire hose and instantaneously digest, understand, ask questions and respond. This is the third year doing this, this is the third year of ask for this. We have yet to really hammer that home across the board, so I would love for that to be a standard practice.
Next year, that is the reference to the department.
Yeah, part of that is budget schedule too, like that shifts by at least a month earlier.
Yeah, it's definitely a month later than usual.
Start stuff. Since the simple numbers really, kind of numbers become useful about this for the theme of 790 gifts, and it's the first of this kind of setting, it's a, a growing pains. So I also hope for next year.
Continuous improvement.
Actually correct.
I think, I think we're ready for you to continue.
Hey, you're both cats, Phil, similarly.
Thank you.
Hey, you're good. Okay, we're good to talk about Senior Center Services and respectfully present parameters. So yeah, so what the Senior Center does is we assess the needs and then the seniors, try to then, you know, respond to those needs, start programs, refer them to other entities that we can be. And the Senior Center, we've been in our current location for over 34 years, I believe, 34 years, okay? And we began the year 2024 with no hope, excitement. We were, you know, all on board, trying to promote a new and bigger facility. And we had a lot of meetings to go to, site visits, we worked closely with an architect. And while it was going on, we still maintain these services for our, for our seniors. Our Senior Center is staffed by myself 40 hours a week. We have an administrative assistant, 18 hours a week. We have an outreach coordinator who is 32 hours a week and we're every single, any minute of it. We have two, currently two band directors that share one position, it's 21 hours a week. Okay, so sometimes one goes around 10, the other goes around 11. We make it, make it work, so maybe either of them go over full-time, okay? So if you'd like to say something about.
Oh, I guess.
Can we review a process?
Starting with what Andrew was saying, I expect, depends upon studies and research for the facility. That'll be their work is something good foundation. We came out of it with two designs, we came out of it with two cost analysis independent, we came out of it with engineering studies, which hopefully will be used in the future soon. So it was good stuff. We're in a position right now, we're looking for a new path forward, looking for Jeremy and new organization, who's looking at the evaluation and select board to come back as to what's the next step. This is still a high priority to town, much of everything we're here. So I hope we can address this in the near future, get it back on track. We misspoke by 1%, so there's an aspect of it. So the future, hopefully, we'll break chemistry together with our proposal, again, with neither of them. And we're just waiting for the new path forward, though, we, we've hit them now. And we're very good.
Okay, and now at this time, I'd like to ask Andrew Vera to speak about our services.
Yeah, I'm going to go for the, a little bit, some of the, some of you are already familiar with them, you've heard these before. Our mission has been continual, whether we have a full staff or not, the quality of our commitment is always there, even if we're understaffed. The Council on Aging will step up, volunteer, we have already put in the hours, we'll go above and beyond without any kind of communication and they will help out as well. I want to tell you that there was a study very recently done by the National Academy of Science, Engineering and Medicine, and they have made a determination based on studies that 25% of adults in the country over the age of 65 are socially, socially isolated and how that leads to additional problems. We are trying to make sure that that doesn't happen to our seniors here. So some of our tropics that I'll talk about is that we do have transportation and it's not only for seniors, but for any disabled person residing in Mendon who may need to go shopping or do errands or come to the Senior Center or have local medical appointments. We offer advocacy, information and referrals of any aging related issues, including home care, personal care, meals on wheels, caregiver support and of course protective services. Should we maybe get a call, we get on that right away. And it's more convenient, I think. Health and insurance information, we get so many calls from people who are just ready to go on Medicare, what's my option, what do you think I should do? We let John Councils back in and can walk them through their various options. We do not make the decisions for them, we just lay out what it is and let them make the decision. But that's available and that's a free service. Fuel assistance, the Senior Center does fuel assistance applications for all of Mendon seniors and all the whole population, not just seniors, we, we take care of all families. They have to come through us the first time and then after that they can continue on their own, I don't know. But we are funneling into the SMOC system so that they can get fuel assistance. This is, this is our council. We have a monthly food pantry distribution, again, to all eligible people in town. We do nutritional programs coordinated with Tri Valley and we do meals twice a week. And we've been in contact with Dr. Cohen about trying to make some kind of arrangements with the school to try to get lunches down there and see if we can make it more than two times a week. And we're hoping to work with that. We do monthly wellness clinics and I believe, I was here last, I believe I was here last Wednesday when you were at Calico, yeah, that's the pitch. And they want to increase the blood pressure clinics instead of once a month, we're going to do it every week. So I was happy for, you know, their efforts to, to work that with visiting nurses. We have educational, recreational, social programs, they're held on a regular basis. We do veterans programs and veterans events. We have weekly fitness programs, we do walking group, we do Shabon, yoga, cheer fitness. We have a weekly chorus and musical groups and we do arts and crafts. We have numerous volunteer opportunities for kids in school or adults who want to help out. One of my favorite things to see is to walk into the Senior Center and see some seniors together at tables, socializing, having a coffee, laughing, making a puzzle or something. It just, it, it gives me hope that I'm here for a reason. I, I really enjoy doing that. And socialization is so important. We all know that aging is not an option. We're all going to get older, but healthy aging, healthy aging is an option. We try to make sure that those options are available. The final things I'll say, and this is just for my personal thing, for the day-to-day running of our center, I don't remember in the 14 years that I've been at the center ever having to come back to the town, except for the new center, coming back to the town to ask for money after you've given us our budget. And fundamentally, I have no memory of ever having to do that. We never sacrificed the quality of our services. We all do our best with that to make sure that we service everybody who needs it. It means staying late, it means coming in on the weekends, we do it. We're in contact with our reps, our state reps and local reps regarding any kind of grant monies that are part of our mission. If there's something that we can get, we go after. And that's my statement.
Before you start, I think I'm going to make a little start, is that 25% of people are.
I'm sorry, they're socially isolated.
And I've been going to the Senior Center now for three and a half years, two and a half years, three years, to help out. And I view that now, my maturity and, rather than talking about trouble people get through things, I view it as a public safety feature. We're saving the lives of citizens, not any different employees, not any different info, but it is a public safety. I think, you know, as you go through your list, it just reinforces that thought and just kind of, I'm in.
I just wanted to review here, in the review of 2024, I sent you the sheet which has our statistics of, you're basically where, if I start off by saying, excuse me, start off by saying that we're still 20% of the population and then the seniors are. And we were open 233 days to provide services. We had 1,840 phone calls looking for, could have been a senior here, could have been the senior themselves, transportation, we responded to those calls. In total, we served 9,545 individuals. And these numbers are all based on a system called My Senior Center. It's, we've been using it since 2009. It's only as good as the input that goes in. So we try visually to train people coming in, they have a tab, like they may have at the library to go in, but if they don't, we have a backup and our backup is a person that will, for every activity, will make sure that Derek can put it into the system. So these numbers are pretty accurate, I haven't buffered them at all. We have clients that are under 60 years, those clients may come for fuel assistance, they may come for the food pantry, they may come for to figure out how to do a SNAP food stamps application, they may come to volunteer. Those clients are, those individuals are 145 out of the total and they've got 882 units or come to our center 882 times. Our van riders, we had 35, 31 van riders last year, our total number of rides was 1,227, that's up 23% over last year. Of course, since the pandemic, all of our numbers have been steadily increasing and I was, I was actually very surprised to see and pleased to see this number. People are taking advantage, but people don't want to give up their licenses. We have one gentleman right now that's, he believes in this, that he is giving it up temporarily. He had an incident happen, he had to stop driving for six months. He called us for probably three weeks asking about how our service worked. And I think finally, our outreach coordinator and I both got it on different, different times, we said, just try it. Our van driver was a wonderful, tried to come down to the center for a cup of coffee because he was trying to figure out how am I, what, my wife's not going to get to our doctor's appointments? How would I get to CVS, I think of my prescription? How am I going to get to the vets to get my dog's prescription? And so he did, within a three-week period, he came repeatedly to the center, he stayed for lunch, he would go afterwards to CVS, closes between 12:30 and 1.
1:00, 1:30.
Well, 1:00, 1:30, we didn't go to lunch. We're down, now, and you have to go to CVS first, then come to the Senior Center. Having them a license is a very difficult thing to do, but we can acclimate people. And one side that we can give you is how many people are using it for medical rides? How many, just because it's a so-called, so I've got a chart of every month of the year, every different category, but between coming to the center, going to the doctors, coming, what else, in the medical shopping, grocery shopping, Monday mornings, Thursday mornings, people have different opinions. Some people like Market Basket, other people want product, show us, even if it's smaller, you know? And so that's something, it's a service that we can clearly, you know, offer to folks, but we have to kind of coax them into it. The other thing is too, we have seniors that have moved to Mendon to live with their parents, I mean, excuse me, children, parents that are, that are coming to live. So anyway, what they, what they're doing is, we'll say, you know, they can come on the van with their parents the first time, escort them to lunch, or our outreach coordinator can go escort them, which we did just recently with two different.
Yeah, she rides the van and it's amazing.
A friendly face, someone to greet you, show you that, because it's a foreign, it's a foreign, I don't know, experience, it's just, it's a very different experience. Once you go, you find a playing fips, you know, it's.
Sometimes you stand or ring, it's just a ring that.
And it puts people at ease, the drivers have to do their trainings, every two years they have certain trains, they have to learn how to use the lift again, they have to learn how to be a good driver, so on and so forth. So we're very, I think I am very proud of our transportation program. We also had outreach, our outreach coordinator, we had, 190 people were assisted through outreach. They were assisted to the 938 times. So when you're, when you need to work with, say, social security or with, I'm trying to think of another entity, say you, say you, say your money was compromised at the bank and you, you come and you feel safe coming to outreach, you might sit down with them and call the bank and work, work things through and it doesn't get done in just one transaction, they might have to come back two or three times for some of these things. So that, that is the case there. Just general information and community education, using the VNA, using Alzheimer's Association, using other entities to come in and educate our seniors, that we assisted or offered assistance 1,404 times. Meals, nutritional programs, 2,106 times. Meals, nutritional programs, 2,106 times. That's our regular lunch, weekly lunches. We have a Panamera food program where people can come in and get bread. That's also the food pantry is rolled into there. So we really take nutritional needs very seriously. And then fitness, fitness is a really big one too. We have, as Peg said, we have the walking group, we have Tai Chi, we have Qi Garden, we have chair program. We just offered a chair program in the afternoon because people calling and saying, you have, you have all these classes at nine o'clock in the morning. I'm not a morning person, so I think, great, let's try offering it in the afternoon. Unfortunately, we had eight people sign up for it, but only three people came consistently. Okay, it's a free program. It's the first that we'll draw out. So, you know, I can't see offering that consistently after this, but I'll try it again. Because the people that came really enjoyed it and they're, they're afternoon people, I guess. We also had just a total of recreational, social, socialization and cultural events. All culminated, 1,889 people crossing our threshold to come to those programs. Health education, health benefits counseling. The benefits council is that Shine program we spoke of. It's serving health information needs of elders. It's a very, it's a very strategic program. I did it for nine years before I came here. I intended to keep up with it, but I couldn't be a director and a Shine counselor in my head anyways. So I stepped aside and over the years I have approved it, but six or seven people to be Shine counselors. And our outreach coordinator is one of them too. So we did that. Medical equipment loan for all people, a football player, you know, sprains his ankle, breaks his. We have wheelchairs, we have wheelchairs, we have wheelchairs. Those are on loan to anybody from Mendon that needs them. A lot of people during the pandemic, things were put on hold. After that, we had more people coming to borrow equipment that were having knee replacements, like when everything opened up. And they're, and they're still coming, they're still coming for those, for the wheelchairs, for the cushions and all that. Fuel assistance applications, I'm disappointed that SMOC, the new SMOC regime does it. They're supposed to publish. Each town in Massachusetts, how many applications were processed in the total amount? Typically at Mendon, we're about 60 applications and it's to the $265,000. What we can only see right now is the ones that we help. And those are for the first timers because they, they come into us, we do it the first time and then they, they can do it on their own if they, if they're prepared to. SMOC, they're supposed to have this information on their website and it's, it's not in there. I have called them, I've gone to trainings with them and asked them for this information. And for whatever reason, they're not putting it there. Because they also let us compare ourselves to how does Hump Hill look? How does Bellingham look and things like that.
This is a 45 net new potential participants in the program.
Yes, and so, but in, you know, two, two, three years ago, I could go on the website and I could see that that number was still 85, 60.
Well, I mean, 45 net new is not a small number, as would make sense. People don't understand the context, that's significant.
Right, right. And it's, it's typically about a thousand dollars benefit per household, typically. Sometimes it's maybe 600, depending upon what you're doing.
And once they come in, Janet can assess their other needs. You, you always, being a social worker for 40 years, you always meet the immediate need first. Because they're not going to think about anything else, on either getting food on their table or getting a bill paid or something. Then once you tell them, yes, we'll work on this, but let's find other ways where you can save money for your other bills or your rent. Let's see if you qualify for food stamps. Let's see if you are eligible for Medicaid. And so Janet does that. She's really like a social worker.
Yes, and also if they're coming for fuel assistance and their income, we can then also, we have the food pantry. We have some other ways to assist you. But my first year here, there was a senior that came in and her income was $20,000 a year. The income limit for SMOC for a single-person household was 19. And it was so hard for me to have to turn her away. Fortunately, that was the first time I think I've ever seen that mid-year, they increased the cap and they increased it to like 20,100 and she was able to come back and re-apply. But it's, it's tough. It's now that the lowest for a single-person household is now about 40, 50,000, I think. I don't have the numbers in my head, but it's about 45, so they've increased that fortunately. Let's see, food pantry, we did, last year we did 428 food just placements. We had of that, we had 51 households, 87 household members that benefited from that. We did food pantry, food deliveries to people that don't drive or for whatever reason can't, you know, can't come to the, to the senior center. So we did food deliveries to 137 people. We had 111 people or entities, homes, families come pick them up, pick up their food. And then we had 180 people come into shop, which is something that we've been, since the pandemic, we've been opening that up more and more. We, that was shut down during the pandemic for obvious reasons, but, and we'd like to see that number increase. We just need to open up other days and times. Because for example, somebody who's working, you don't want to penalize them because they're working. So we, we used to have evening hours, we need to start offering evening hours. Veterans served, we have our veterans appreciation. We've got, you know, small number, 44, we'd like to see that increase, but we'll talk about that later. And one of the things we, we count on, not that we count on, we're just grateful for, is our volunteers. Volunteers, 64 volunteers has to put in 2,497 hours. And again, these hours are all put into My Senior Center. They've got that tag, you know, when they, either when they come for their shift or they're done doing their projects, they swipe their tag, they've got a specific area. They know that they're coming for office support, they're coming to Tri Valley lunches to serve lunch. They're working in the food pantry. Those numbers are all authentic numbers in our system. And lastly, one thing that I think is unique to Mendon, because my tab certainly wasn't friendly about this, community use of the building. We have, last year we had 11 groups use it 97 times. That's down from, you know, when I first came here, we had 20 groups, you know, and probably 200 times. But it's during the pandemic, people didn't need, or they found other places to go. The school opened up to them. But that's a pretty significant number and they, they've got use of the building when they're there.
And it crosses all ages.
All ages.
Got the Young Scouts.
Got the Young Scouts, right, yeah. And I'm sorry, I was a little bit late, the Lions were there tonight and they saw the new chairlift and they wanted to use it, but tried it. And then they had all kinds of questions about it. I'm like, did you tag admission? I said, I have a meeting, I have a meeting I have to go to.
You love that.
So, yeah, it's, it's awesome. It opens up the stairway so that people can go up unencumbered without getting caught on this, this chair. And it comes down and it sits down at the bottom and it folds up nice, nice and neatly so that it's kind of out of sight almost. But so next one.
I have a question. Is the, is there a protocol or, or the other groups to use it? Like, do they need to be a nonprofit or?
It's, it's pretty much nonprofit. So they're all, you know, we've got the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Lions, civil pleasures, the culting communities. You know, we've had, we've had, I don't want to say. We did, we did cheer in the row, we allowed one large family that needed a place for Thanksgiving. And there were a few minor mishaps and so they, I think it cost them a little bit of money. So, yeah, they're better. It was still because of the chairlift, the old chairlift, you know? But other than that, you know, and.
We try to be a friendly neighbor. Yeah, and you can spread that word, if anyone wants some space, they need some space, if they're available, you do.
They have a sleepover for the Girl Scouts.
Friday night, they go and put up, and since I have a sleepover.
They were supposed to do it, they had to, a month or so ago. And for whatever reason, I don't know if he was going to be at the town hall, got canceled. So they came to me, they use our center regularly, twice a month. They asked if they could use it. I said, we've done it before, you know? So they use the whole facility, go upstairs, downstairs.
We have a community place.
Yes, welcome. So, but that's, we did a lot, this is a lot of work over the course of the year. But again, we could do it without those volunteers, absolutely. We are, we have.
Andrew, when you want to leave some budget numbers?
Sure. Okay, so budget numbers, most of our, you know, budget numbers have not changed.
I want to kind of touch on the one, okay, the one thing before Andy had started. It's kind of a large, large number listed here and we'll, we'll get into it. What, I sat down with Andy before Andy last night, you know? The, the two votes on the vet exclusion had failed. That doesn't mean there's no cost to the town on staying in current, current quarters. So I said, be a, be kind of maximalist in, in your, your request here and say, what is it that we need to make the current senior center usable for us? And this gets at it, this isn't the totality of projects. This is what kind of needs to talk about one year of things. And we can, we can open up more prior to the detail. I expect a lot of this to be funded in special town meeting articles, annual town meeting articles, you know, through different capital lines. I don't expect there to be a $288,000 line in the council on age budget. But the point in it being here is to say, there's a, there's a cost to keeping our current plan usable for the organization. It's not build a new senior center or zero cost at all. So that's what this is and that's what we're going to get at here.
Okay, so yeah, many of our expense, expense line items have been the same. Such as, you know, lights and fuel and those things. But the, the area that we really feel we need to focus on are staffing. Last year we came before you, last year we asked to get an 18-hour part-time assistant. It was our fourth person, now our third person, now our fourth person to, to leave, to come and take a part-time position. And the first person lasted three years, the next person one year, the next person two years, the next person one year. And a lot of them, they were great people, but they used us, they should have used us. They were a stepping stone for them. I would have loved to have had any one of them stay, but I, and I don't, I don't begrudge them, you know, going on to full-time employment. So we are once again this year asking for nine additional hours for this position. We are advocating that we would like to use five hours of grant funding from, from the state. We do that with our outreach position, we use five hours of grant funding and then the tab for that position. It's 27 hours at the town pace and that's what this would be. It would be increasing it from 18 to 27. And we do realize that that could potentially come with benefits. We do realize that not everybody takes benefits, but I understand you have to.
So just the current position right now is 18 hours total, all funded by the general fund. This proposal is to be 32 hours total with 27 of it funded by the general fund. So it'd be, right now, none of the position is funded by grants. And then in this proposal with the additional grant availability, 500.
Is that grant guaranteed or are?
Yes, yes. Now, so that comes up to, the difference with the proposed rate would be about $10,500 for those nine hours, plus the cost of benefits, which we would, I'd have to see the terms of the grant that we would likely take for beyond the general fund.
What would be the loaded cost of all the benefits if they went on a family?
The most expensive one right now is about $33,000 and change. And then they would also participate in the system, but we wouldn't get assessed that charge until fiscal '27. Where benefits sets fiscal '27 is based upon all our, and there's such a change.
Let's get a preparation.
Depends on the salary, but it's probably an additional, you know, $7, $7,000 with that. But it's wide, it varies widely and varies on the performance of the fund. But, you know, you can kind of take a benefits generally as about $40,000 at the time.
And currently this position doesn't involve.
Correct, because it's below 20 hours. 21, whatever.
So now that brings me to our current staff member, our outreach coordinator, that is 32 hours. This position is, has become, it is my backup. I need, I need, when I'm not there, I need to have someone else in charge. But beyond that, the school of the job description for this outreach position is just beyond what's the pay grade as far as we're concerned. We're looking for an additional, you know, everybody's going to be getting a 3% increase salary, but we're looking for an additional 3% increase for this position and which is, comes out to $970. It's just to bring that position up closer to other administrative positions. There's administrative positions for the building department, for the highway department. It's not going to bring that, that funding, but it's merit, would be a merit-based, you know, increase as far as we're concerned. The person that's doing this job is above and beyond every single day. It's, and we did, we did a good job on the job description. I know it's, several job descriptions are being looked at through by the college study. And we know that we could see a movement in this position, but it would become, that was always what, FY '27. And we're not asking for a lot, but we, we would like to bring that position into, in the, in the work.
And Lionel will be responsible.
Yeah, Lionel will be responsible for saying.
If you look at their job description. The person who gives in the question. This is more than, that lacks the mission, administrative position. This is an interior sector worker that has a lot of skill. And she had been with us for seven years.
It's just so amazing. I understand that this position is not in the town hall union and I don't know if that would be, like, I don't know if it is possible to add the position to the town hall union and then it would be in the steps, but I don't, I don't know. If, yeah, and if. I don't know if it would be beneficial in some way to consider it in terms of, you know, steps, rather than, this is sort of a, like a free, somewhat free-keeping position.
Listen, that was the last comment, this is the integral part, the critical part of, of the board's center. Just based on skills, animal, and 2000 data basis.
And our training. So I'll say two names, merit-based increases and classification-based increases are going to separate, separate ideas. But right now, there are, there's a swath of non-union folks in town who got the letter when they started and they said, this is your rate and there's no other terms of employment. They don't have a one-pager, they don't have a, you know, six-page contracts like a lot of other folks do. So I'm working with HR to take all these non-union folks and get kind of terms of employment that don't necessarily mirror a union contract, but are more robust than a letter they might have gotten 13 years ago. So this position is currently not what, the positions that are in the union provide, what you said, similar level work benefit from are in most categories. And this position has now, because this position has. So it is, it's a room for studying that, but it is likely that it hasn't kept pace with, with comparable positions.
But there is nothing stopping anybody from giving merit-based increases. Like, you don't need a union to drive steps in order to give somebody a raise. There are millions and millions and millions of people not in unions that go through that process every day, every year.
Yeah, I think that is, you know, to the detriment of some non-union positions that they don't have that. Well, it's, it's, it's that, that's the step.
So are you going to start on project service?
I guess we can go back and forth. You see the numbers larger than we have before?
Sorry, actually, before we jump off of that, so the, the number in salaries and wages, that is just the hours, not including benefits?
Yes, so the number, the number that you see does not include an increase. We, this is something we discussed like a month ago, but we didn't build it in. And sorry, we discussed it, but we didn't build it in. So that 3% isn't in the number that you see in the salary and wages.
See admin additional nine hours?
It's, yes.
But the additional, so there's $10,569 in there for the admin assistant for an additional nine hours. There is not the 3% merit-based increase for the outreach coordinator baked into that. It's something that's been an additional request, things that's been submitted. We've kind of evaluated, chart additional assets.
And it says that two-year, 7% versus the expected 3%. So that's why that gap is that large.
But 132 doesn't include 4% for everyone who's currently, right?
So.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. This goes from a current state of nine hours to 18 hours?
It goes from 18 hours to 27 hours.
27.
So that's what triggers the, the benefits piece, which is not listed here, that's listed in. But if you, the benefits piece that we talked about before, I had, I had costed in COA assistance to full.
Yeah.
So that was as part of your thinking, sure.
Okay, so in the other line items, we're looking at health insurance, that, that an assumption of success there was built into those budget numbers.
So any thought to adding just a second 20-hour position rather than helping?
Yes, we, we did so last year too. But they, but again, our, our feeling is we keep losing part-time people and so. But if, they, but again, our, our feeling is we keep losing part-time people, and so.
Yeah, if you, if any of us, we discussed it, COA, Jordan, was the continuity service. It's two different people working two different days, but they're all doing things differently individually, even through process and procedure. Their continuity service is not solid, for two million people. I know the impact is big, that, of putting that in, so, obviously, all of it. Looking for, and continuity, that, for, for skill development, and a better for delivery, thank you, for the, for the service.
And one thing I need to point out too, um, the original job description for this position, we had to scale it way back. The original job description was gonna be someone to help take over the, um, senior worker, senior veteran work program. Um, there, there were so many components that I was gonna shift, so that I could do my administrative work. And, um, there's just eighteen hours a week is not enough to do. So we can re-scale that job description back, like, so far, so then it's not even, it's, it's, it's doing basic, you know, what's any secretary, or like. Inserting, yeah, just problems, doing the news line, which is crucial. But it's, it's not, it's not someone that is gonna step in for me when I'm not there. That's whatever happened to the outreach coordinator, do that, she steps, right there. She closes up the building when I'm not there. Eighteen hours a week isn't enough for that person to even be there at the end of the day, to have, take a shift to closing up.
Space is also pretty, then into the same, exactly, we have only two offices, one is Amy's, and one is Janice, who's the, the social worker. And the administrative assistant sits at a desk open, um, so with two people even sharing the space, I, I, I can just see some problems with that.
Don't think we have, we haven't.
We thought of it, we thought of it.
But, but we would, we would not see these, i- if we weren't with that suggestion, they would not be working at the same time. So the space issue should be mooted, right?
Right, and that's the first, I can find, you know, so, everybody does, they're stopped just for the, the sharing of computer. Messages for, I've done it too.
Yeah, for, for me, the stronger argument is that, that not being able to retain someone for longer, because I know, like, it's going through the hiring process, like, it seems like it's a, feels like it's every year. I guess it's not quite every year, but then you also have, like, gases after, like, thieves. And so I know that big strain on the, the rest of the staff. I mean, we, the rest of the staff is basically a genetic.
Right.
Uh, and then volunteers.
And the board.
Right, so, so that, I, that is where I see the big challenge. Because I've also suggested, I, I also made that suggestion a year ago, but, but what about two half-time people? But I think then you get potentially two people who are using their dogs as stepping stones to their full-time employment.
I can also see from a social worker perspective, it's probably good for people in the town using that service to have a friendly face that, you know. Yeah, the consistent face that's always there, and, yeah.
Yeah, any more questions around?
Thank you.
Uh, just to go back and forth with Amy and myself, the large amount on the, uh, contract services. Specifically, uh, Jeremy indicated earlier, some of them are things you just need to, some of them because they're staying in the car, so. And one of the, uh, one of the needs there, there's another document that's basically kind of detailed. The, um, the, in the right order, it is, and I probably did. So essentially, we'll go through the summary page, and if we have more detail, I can see that. We need a position to be able to be careful, kind of that. We're crossing progress road, there's a couple of people, traffic to the street by about an hour. And five of them stop, I don't know, they can't see the light. We've had a number of people almost get there, look at the disaster going down. So when we have danger events, and, I don't know if it's here, we need to get at least detail. And Dave would like to help us, but he can't commit resources if some emergency comes up, lessons are paid deep. Then you go ask the contractor. Here's the guy who's supposed to use the highest rate of the highest control room, which is just like one hundred dollars. The standard client to get the screen. Yeah, I think it'll be nine. Uh, and four hour minimum, but it's four hundred dollars of that, so we have that bottom, that cost factor. Right now, there's no one cleaning the facility except, uh,
Jim, my buskers.
Air drivers, whoever else is around, so I'd like to at least have that facility brought up to the standard. Other, other facilities within the town, and incorporate two bits of the cleaner that we have used in town before. And that's a cost of a hundred and seventy dollars. And, and that's just to bring us to normal sanitation to be paid out. I like that consistency with cleaning the bathrooms and, or.
Probably handle that together, but I don't know, it's just.
The contractor, the same person that they're proposing to contract to?
The same, yeah.
We hadn't been, we've been, maybe we're hanging our drivers still.
Uh, so, um, as I learned this over the past couple of months, that this is how we do it. We're paying far more than ten thousand dollars for the same service across town and state. So we're going to competitively procure this in fiscal twenty-six. So this is, it's probably, uh, a cap of a number that we're going to be paying, um, town-wise. And it's likely that we'll be able to procure something at a, at a lower rate. Um, yes, we're, I mean, we just eclipsed ten thousand dollars here at town hall, so far close to it at least. So when we add in the other buildings, we need to be competitive procure.
Yeah, and I take the cost of that on a annual basis, it's six thousand, seven hundred and change.
So when we look at the contracted services jumping up about, we're gonna go back up. We look at the contracted services jumping up about twelve thousand dollars. We talk about six thousand of it for cleaning, four thousand of it for details. So that's ten of the eleven thousand dollars, and then we're looking at, you know, five percent increases on other parts of contracts that, that go up. Um, some estimates based upon, um, lived experience, something like plumbing and, and other, other things where you, you just have estimates. So, the, the huge driver for people to adopt to be twenty-five, and it's a question of twenty-six, is that big, the cleaning and the details for it?
Yes.
Jeremy, do we know if other town facilities are procuring or handing their own cleaning budgets? I mean, I would have assumed that we had a municipal-wide contract for our town building.
If we had, well, still these.
Great, well, yeah, I wasn't gonna say it, you know, I'll say it.
We could hear it.
No, no, but, no, but I'm, I'm just saying, well, by police, they doing their own thing?
Uh, number of buildings contracted for this same, same, you know, consultant prior to that coming in.
Individually, so we're not getting all, potentially.
I believe town hall, then, I know town hall, that could, Janice or so, um, but no, we're not.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
Especially when I saw this number, right, because when you see the, kind of individual invoices once in a while, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, it's generally noise.
Do you have the purchase orders, is it, is it able to track, and the payments that eclipse ten thousand dollars?
And the, uh, going down there, the other ones are previous postage, lighting, fuel, previous, the same. Um, the supply, the, uh, the numbers decreased last year, and we didn't even know it was decreased last year.
It was moved, it was moved to postage.
Oh, okay.
You previously didn't have a postage line, and then, so postage, postage plus supplies equals three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So my, my.
Okay, so, we're making something, we're playing on, that's a lot of this.
Well, and our supplies are threefold, our supplies are for the building, our supplies are for the office, our supplies are for programming. So it's, yes, it's, um.
I guess the calculus that went into, you thought it was reduced, it actually wasn't?
It, it, it sounds like that.
Right, so does that mean we should reduce it by the proposed?
Okay.
Anything?
What's your answer?
No.
Yeah. I'm not gonna die in that, but, okay.
We're looking at an increase of eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And so far this year, um, on postage, the council agent has spent one thousand and five dollars in postage.
Well, we use grant funding for, I appreciate about five hundred dollars a month. It's getting more, we're adding more and more baby boomers. Um, looking for those, using our friends, um, who used to evolve down, um, at which saves significant money. It's still getting up there, we just had a lot of seniors in town.
And they spent one thousand nine hundred dollars out of that two thousand dollars. So collectively, between that three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, within the end of February, they have two hundred and sixty dollars.
One, one quarter left? A little more, a little more, okay.
Maybe we'll be June and the rest of March.
Okay.
And about that one, moving the van, the van has a requirement to get sixty tires off this year. So maintenance and cost of fuel is going up, the, the plumb is, so we're looking at moving, uh, it was, it's a, it increased, but it was going to have a minor, minor increase at six thousand, especially if they're careful in the maintenance sector, they need to come in this year.
And so on this, the, the highway department does take care of the van, they can't do whatever it needs, you know, any drive shaft or whatever they, highway can't do that. Uh, but they do take oil change, things like that. Um, previously, a lot of the, um, costs of, you know, keeping the van were handled by friends. Uh, when I learned that at a, at a COA meeting, uh, I was like, this is, this is the council and agents' van. This is a, a public service that, um, you know, us as a municipality, you should be, the friend's money should be going towards supplemental programming, not towards consumables for a basic service. So I told, I had a conversation with Amy, and said, you know, see what it costs to run the van three years, put that into your budget request, the town should be paying that source. Um, I will say, the van gets fired up for, you know, short runs and single-person runs. You, you saw that there was twelve hundred runs based upon like forty people or something, so, you know, thirty runs per person here. Um, so as the fire department gets to do, do admin vehicle, and they cycle through, they have a, um, explorer, which can be proposed. Tensions to, to, to surplus to the council agent to be able to extend the life of the van. Um, they use the explorer for a small, single-person.
Because that van is like a thirteen-person van.
Yeah, the firm, most often. Okay. Uh, the other, the next issue here is, was, was that, there's a veteran, a veteran's event handled at Gilfrims. There are approximately, I suppose, thirty-five hundred dollars. That's a quote from Tara, who's the administrative person over there. The group charge is three hundred and fifty, and their price for the meal would be between twenty, eighty, thirty dollars. And we're just paying eight hundred, uh, hundred, eighty, eighty to a hundred people. The reason we're going this way, the village is small, we can invite the two hundred and fifty veterans to, to, perhaps, to live. Uh, we can, we do about forty, it's a great event, but we can't even go to support because there's no room in the building. By time to get the police department. So, again, to what Jeremy said earlier, we need a facility occasionally, and this is a pilot. We need to do more of this in the future, but this is a pilot. Let's see if we can orchestrate one of these, do the chorus and bring it, keyboard in, do all the ceremony that we do. And after pricing Galliford's, Willbrook, Willbrook's is small, and whatever the ballroom is in town, uh, uh, Gilfrims, Gilfrims. So, that's an increase there, that's already, that's up. Then the big one. The base lot is on the building safety and maintenance, and it is, and, uh, that's your supporting department in the back that kind of helps us understand the benefits.
These are ones in the visa units.
Yeah, these are, well, I think the best, when I emphasize safety, some of it is very safe, and some of it are really, a little bit of elderly age. I had a visual of it. The parking lot had, there was additional back, but they had thirty to forty spots, and they did it with sign in, in a town meeting, twenty.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, about it, uh, that looking at, using AI tools and talking to some people, and that's what's in for this, we're going around. Hundred fifty-something thousand for excavating a cave, and a lot next to it, and twenty thousand dollars for lights.
And twenty-eight parking spaces, part of the center.
I mean, currently, by the way, we're parking in private property.
We've got permission to do so.
And they keep building sheds, I think that's the hint.
That's an invention.
Specifically, some part, part of issues with, with, um, we talked about with the details, it's the crossing. Uh, so we priced out what, I don't know, like solar lighted crosswalk would look like there, with flashing and everything. Um, it's about twelve thousand dollars, a, a, uh, but that's not money I would have wanted the town to invest without, like, a permanent, you know, a long-term. Our grant, so just the goodwill of neighbors is, you know, excellent how the center functions for these larger events. But we can't put in this, you know, right, it's expensive infrastructure without a long-term.
Because I, I've got a fear that if I ask them for something, they're ready, they're gonna say, sorry, I can't park there anymore.
I'm assuming this would eliminate the need to park across the street?
Oh, oh, yes, I think we're talking about parking across the street, yeah, but.
And we think it's gonna take the acre of land that abuts us.
Yes, that's what I'm saying now, they function with twenty, why do they need more? Because they have the store for the day.
It, it is, it is scary, and it's, it's what we've been doing the last couple of times, is we've been driving the van over there, to slip over there, to get people on board, to cross them safely, safely.
Or using our private cars.
I would say the, the current parking lot, even though there are twenty-eight spaces, it is, it's a very tight parking lot, and I've seen.
Especially down by the stone wall.
By the stone wall, there's not really room for cars to maneuver there.
And people come in the outway and go home the in-way.
But this, uh, they, they, this is pretty, and so it carries, they're not there. Uh, the next component is the porch, and the, porch, porch and the roof that's on the, the front roof. The bracketed roof, uh, there's pictures in the back, there's the floorboards are on it.
We don't want to let them know.
The, the board, the stuff is, has always been seventeen years, and, uh, it needs to be replaced. And in doing so, when you do that, you change the step pass to a landing, not go down, totally historic, it's not gonna be straight out, for a senior person. And the reason we need to have that fixed, is it's the second egress to the building, right now, you don't have those access, you only have one egress, which is. So that's, uh, again, both are the same issue, kind of mediators and fines. Uh, trim handling, uh, it's a side of buildings, so all we need to do is paint some windows and a frame, but it's gonna cost about five grand, spare, that, print. If you don't think of looking, I didn't bring a picture for that, you go ahead and share it, but, but that's about a five thousand dollar job. I'm not looking, you know, that's a, I don't know how we, Jeremy and everybody wants to handle these bonds for your general. There's a list of what's needed. The, the zeebo has railing, and a product is a picture of the handling around it there, and I've got about twenty-five hundred dollars for the, for. Parking the floor, primary seventeen years old, in the building, used to your place. We got a little lamp up, it's about ten thousand dollars. Another interesting one is a egress coming out of the second block, there's only one exit from there. Since that first floor had an issue, and you couldn't get out of there, you couldn't get out of the second floor. So, if we can figure out a way to do the porch, we could egress out of that second floor with a porch, and have a doorway, two access, and two exit on that second floor. And then we put in an emergency door, which would bring rerouting some, uh, some heating, because the heating goes, goes basically. Uh, the next one's a storage shed, four thousand dollars, the cost basically wouldn't go, look online, the guy across the street, is he not parking lot, where parking? Uh, we're currently running a shed for five hundred and seventy-four. So, so we're spending, you know, that's off five hundred and seventy, so. So we're spending a couple grand a year.
How long do you have that?
Well, six years, three years, four years, three or four years, it's a pandemic. Um, so what we have, it's, um, through the pandemic, we parked the van out, and we had the, and, and once we gave it to, we, we realized that that was really a broken habit with the van, we, having to replace batteries and leaking roofs and things like that. So, uh, once we had to bring the van back in, we pulled out, like, not all of it, but a lot of it out, so, we drove a little bit.
And then the final, final two items, the chairs are, I think they're all seventeen years old, but they're breaking. Some, uh, volunteer, they'll, occasionally. But I don't think we, they're doing chair exercises, and I wouldn't want to see a, no, a person leaning on the arm, and the chair fall off. So we'd like to replace the chairs, and that's seventy-two hundred dollars, ranges from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, sure. Uh, and then, this last item here, and I don't know, generally, I didn't see anything in Andy's budget that says general maintenance that happens for a year. So I threw a ten thousand dollar number in there to cover things like, if the refrigerator doesn't need to be replaced, if the oven isn't working right, we need to fix it. It's the normal stuff.
It isn't now, sorry. It's in the contract services and it's like seven thousand. It's got, it's regular maintenance for the whole building, but it's a bit of the stuff to get in there. It's coming in there, there's.
You do have money in there, but I look at this and I look at my house and I say, I spend that either for maintenance, that's why houses plenty of.
So should the seven thousand in contract services be bumped to ten?
I think they're, perhaps, I think they're kind of talking about different things. This is, he's talking about items, he's talking about.
Yeah, no, I was, I was good with the ten, but I just want to clarify, is it, is there a maintenance budget line item or not?
Okay, go back.
One, then two, if it's covering different things, you need to up the number to cover what Phil's describing and what Amy's expecting.
So what Amy's describing is service contracts.
Yep.
And what Phil's describing is, is better capital equipment.
Yeah, I would think the ten thousand here should, we should look at the general maintenance facilities line item.
Eighty-five thousand essentially.
I don't, I don't care, I don't think, it's just a heads up.
Yeah, no, 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 a lot of this stuff that I see here could actually be funneled through there, but then I asked the question, do you think sixty-five is the right number? Just a question we should think about.
Yeah, I was.
If you weren't, if this is new, we're looking, oh, I didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the sixty-five was not, the thirty additional was based upon like essentially double as what we had.
Yep.
And then knowing we had a fifteen and twelve thousand dollar project coming. But yeah, I don't know that sixty-five is enough.
But, but we could also, I mean, this, this is our first real full year with that line item and a focus on town maintenance, if you will. I mean, there are some things I think we could do sooner than later and if we need to replenish with free cash in the fall, based on our, what our spend rate looks like or what projects look like, we can revisit that, you know?
Yeah, I would agree with you, town much baser. I don't think we need to have it.
Nor do I think Amy and her team should be worried about checking the oven, right?
What was that, please?
I don't think you and your team should be worried about checking ovens and, you know, I think.
Give me some steps for this.
My, my bigger point is, what I'm hearing is, we've got a lot of great programming. I hear a lot of passion, I'd rather have the experts focused there and take the maintenance and the facility.
I would change.
They just said, said facilities, I said I wouldn't, but I did.
But we did want to present this to.
You're repeating.
We did want to present this to the board, and it's on this building, thirty-seven, so it's our there. And there's some safety issues, we were hoping to get addressed with a new building, we can't. Okay, we're getting a new building someday, but this year is off, we know that.
But we'll leave somebody to work in building, if they can just move in.
I, I just want to say, Phil is a master of repetitive messaging.
I can take personally seven times to learn something from you at fourteen. Where do you, where do you, I read with the, someone would be earliest if you guys would come back to proud of the senior center.
Yeah, Jeremy, I mean, so that we have a, we have a study going on, so.
Yeah, so we've contracted with, through federal architecture, we've contracted with a, an architect firm to come in and look at liability of other options and present to reports. A lot of the feedback we got from folks was, why not X, Y, or Z? So this study is going in and, you know, we have the proposal for the recent deal set at North Ave, so it's not renewed, we have. It is coming up with, not as fully fledged as that, but, you know, test fits on square footage for programmatic needs and, you know, square footage, cost estimates, we're cost estimators on different sites around town that, you know, that are evaluated and processed. So they're still kind of in there, we kicked it off in mid-January and then did a big gap and dump after that kick out, so they're still kind of sorting through that and our problematic stuff. We are meeting again either the end of this month, beginning of next month, to talk about next steps for them. So, you know, late spring, mid-summer, maybe, we can expect, we can have some sort of report. Be presented to your board, to this board, to say, kind of, here's, here's the alternatives. And then it becomes a financial, political, timing, whatever kind of question you want to have in mind.
Love to understand, and I don't think we need to get into it now, but the goals of what the success looked like for this effort, right? Because you guys came back with something that was millions of dollars less and we saved the average taxpayer, I believe it was around twenty dollars per year, right? So I honestly don't know what success looks like and how we move forward here because let's say you take another millions of dollars out of it, okay, you've saved another twenty per year, right?
Three thousand, six thousand, twenty thousand per municipality. The core of what you need for a senior center is going to cost you about the same. There was so much to squeeze on.
Yeah, I think there was some concern about the location. I mean, I heard folks talk about the location as, it was causing, obviously it was a concern, but location kept coming up as a, as a question.
But there was like a unified concern, I mean, I heard that from some people, but, you know, so, but.
I don't, I don't hear any location.
For municipal use, and so I guess the question is.
Yeah, I don't know how many times I can hear a town meeting, that was purchased for a municipal use, it can't be for anything other than that, well, this was municipal use.
Well, I, I guess my concern is, i- if we're going to come in and ask for, you know, close to three hundred thousand and then on the special town meeting in November, this is a new senior center that's going to come back on the ballot six months later, people are going to ask, we just put three hundred thousand into the building and now we're asking for a new senior center six months later.
So it wasn't, so out of this, two eighty-eight, one seventy of it is for the parking lot, and that's not going to be a chess expense, that will be kind of off in something, you know, probably in a town meeting article in the fall as well. So if there's the expectation and not at all significance, if there's the expectation that we have a debt exclusion on the fall, we wouldn't then also be asking for under seventy thousand dollars.
Well, but, but I think that the broader question, I think what I'm hearing is, we're investing money where it is and then we're going to ask for new senior centers. So I think the timing of the study and the decision made on whether to go forward on the senior center potentially impacts a decision on whether or not we go forward with the investments in the current building.
Exactly.
So those are, those are unknowns, this is really just laying out. I think one of the big things that came out of the study program was to say, a lot of things were, were not, were put off because we wanted a new building. And we did, basically, the building committee said, you can't do that. You need to make sure everyone understands what's needed if we don't do a new building, which is what this is representing, versus the cost of a new building. Now we're going to balance, and, and a lot of the two eighty-eight and what Phil's laid out is actually in the capital plan too, individually, which we walked through in that meeting the other day, so it, it's out there. So these are all going to be decision points and to your, and I think the point you made is, before we invest in the current place, what's our plan for the new, potential new place? And those are all questions that are open and we'll need to discuss and figure out what the right path forward is.
And then also, what, if there is a plan for a new seniors and community, senior and or communities that are somewhere, what would the current facility be used for and what would, how, like, how would these proposed improvements fit with some other use for the town for that space?
And I just want, one other thing, the new study that Jeremy touched on, one, one difference, the costs are going to be compartmentalized, so it's modular. And we've actually, the programming effort that Amy and team have done, the building committee has reduced certain things like emergency centering, sleeping quarters, showers, that has actually been pulled out. We said status quo emergency management, which is heating and cooling is an example, stays in. So we said, what does it currently do? Let's not expand emergency management capabilities with this new program. So that new program, you're going to be able to see what the cost is for food pantry, straight senior center programming, et cetera. And that should also then, Jeremy, be applied to the current design we have at North Ave because there should be some sort of reduction there as well, if we're not going to look for full-blown showers and, you know, emergency management capabilities. So a lot of work underway, it's in flux.
I do find, King here, is that many of these items, as we do this influx in studies and research, time goes by and these are comparative safety issues today.
Yeah, I just think we need to have a compelling story for the, for the townspeople, right? For them to work clear as to what the plan is and what we're doing and, and how this all ties together. So folks, at the town meeting, I'm asking the questions that I'm asking.
Yeah, and, and it may, the right decision might be to make two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in, in maintenance and facilities enhancements, even though we know we're going to go in eighteen months, coming back for a vote for a new building, that might be the right decision. I don't know, but to be able to articulate that to the voters is what's important.
Well, again, we'll know more once we get the, once we get the results of this study in a few months, which will be after town meeting, so it'll be after annual town meeting, but potentially this will be something we can talk about in the fall as well.
But as a team, we'll continue to advocate this thing. They're going to do a search. I'll continue to talk about safety issues, ADU issues, again. And that's important. And as I said, I love you, but this is like fire and blood. It is a safety. This is not just the vice to have.
Jeremy, I don't think we finished the rest of the line items.
That's a wrap up there.
End scene, I don't think we're done yet.
All right, we talked so long, but it's important.
And so we were, yeah, we talked about thirty-five hundred, that was, that was the last one to have changed. So the van replacement here doesn't have, that's just a note for me, the van is replacement is on the, on the.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Right, so we do have a couple of other.
Your attention for all this time, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your force.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
So next up, we have conservation. If you could introduce yourself, just for posterity.
Yeah, it's a lot of, I'm the conservation agent.
So we can kick off this dollars budget, just because there's kind of a housekeeping sort of thing here. So when the fiscal twenty-five budget was presented and it's, I guess I have a question that Greg was asking before, is this just salary or is it salary plus benefits? So when the fiscal twenty-five budget was presented, salary line, taking the conservation, you're in the full time, we didn't delay benefits. And that, and I don't, and I do this, document it and, and load it into our leisure as such. So make that, you know, transfer how to. When we see sixteen thousand, seventy-two thousand, sixty-one thousand, that's going full time, but having the thirty thousand dollars of benefits in there, but also having salary subsidized off the general fund, but account at fifteen thousand dollars. So what the fiscal twenty-six number here is, which we'll, we can talk about all this in days. The fiscal twenty-six number here is the full weight of the twenty-five salary plus a three percent quota. That's what's presented here, RAP is not, the proposal here is to not have RAP, which stands for what, something?
It's someone with state. If the, the state fund, state waterman fees goes into that account, so it's only allowed to be used for wellens, well protection, it's a salary, and this.
That was our, sorry, which one's five, I was just trying to contextualize what it, that it's, that's, yeah, state funds is not.
Yeah, state funds, whereas our local land fees go into a separate volume.
Right, so that, that's, that's what this is here, we want to talk about that a little bit. Do you want to take away the rest of your budget, you want to stay here?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it helps me to talk about a little bit what I do. The other part of this is sixty-one thousand in the conservation budget, but I'm doing thirty hours conservation, ten hours energy. And I don't know, because right now I'm assigned to both roles, but maybe ten hours needs to be broken out. Because I don't think it necessarily, the green communities, energies, they're probably stuffed up, they're heavily fault on this conservation budget. So that's another, and point of order.
Right, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a budget, a GL account associated with energy conservation and salary line, so it'll all be here. I think that's a good point, we should split, we should split that.
Could, could we just call it a sustainability agent?
It's conservation agent, like in the session, is that something?
Conservation agent is what my role is typically called. Bigger towns will have a conservation director, administrator, the agent, and then the admin assistant. So, but I've been calling myself one of the energy coordinator.
So, so, but what you're describing, you're saying a new line item.
That's the accounting. Split, yeah.
Right, okay.
And to that point, the energy coordinator, that's part of getting that climate meter designation within, having someone focused on that, getting a climate meter designation within.
So for, you know, conservation, I'm running the department, helping the commission, running the meetings. In the past year, I think I have felt, I don't feel very important, but I heard a lot of community feedback, especially from engineers and contractors and people who are coming in and applying for permits. In twenty-twenty fiscal year of twenty-four, the commission reviewed four permits, or issued four permits that I have, that were, you know, paid into accounts. This year we've done fifteen so far, that includes some really big commercial reviews. And I think we've done a great job working with the planners, we linked the stormwater management permits. So now my permits reference their permits and then, you know, we put them into a key point so the building inspector can see our permits are all on the same software, we can help him see our permits. I've also started internally numbering our RBAs, which is our smaller permits, and we do notice of intent and request for determination. So now we have local end in numbers, I'm doing it by year, you know. And so that's been working well. And so the Conservation Commission Act gives the commission jurisdiction over Well and Protection Act and open space. So also doing the conservation land, managing trails. We're working on a conservation restriction for the, that property, the other favor road, it's about two hundred acres. And then last year, we finished the Maple Farm conservation restriction. I submitted a master's grant, asking for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for opening a trail or building a trail on Money Brook North, which is the conservation land of budding three more that that goes down over Money Brook and up. We got the easement on Brookfield Lane development, so we can have a longer loop. Working with NMAZAR, with Land's Committee and CPA, and we had a contract with Conservation Works. They came out, they designed the trail for us. So getting all that submitted is a bit of a load. And then designing the trail in a way that you can get into Hope Vale, come back around and end up on Maple Farm. And so then this trail network is about three and a half miles, both designed by Conservation Works. So hoping, you know, fingers crossed for that, but. And then proposing that is, you know, some work with scouts or the Bay State Trail Riders, the horse riding group, for some trail bridges and different things that we'll need, well, recording again, we're going to have to permit those bridges and trail crossings. So a big project. And then, you know, the past year also helping, we did lake demo treatment, so getting the education treated, found out that that permit was on some lady's property, so we ended up getting all that closed and off her deed. And now we're working on getting the new notice of intent for this year so that we have something on our, whatever, I don't know what do you, maybe the town beach, but that is, you know, it shouldn't be clouding, someone else's being tamed. So getting that in order, working with water level and, that's under the contract services line. And we are, committed all of our funds for that. So we do the water treatment. The vegetation management treatment. This year we also have to get that permitting through. So we've committed all our funds and then we've also been working with Lake Demo Association. Water and Wetland is preparing a permit for invasive purple leaf strike treatment for lake residents and they asked the commission to meet MASH pathway, so we set aside seven hundred dollars for that treatment as well. We also have water and wetland work in that of Brookwoods Conservation Area. There's a patch of five nineties, which is another invasive plant, so we had them, part of the C P I, they went out and have done that treatment. There's a lot of permitting with the natural heritage and nature species program for salmonators and total habitat, so working with water and wetland to make sure we go out at the right time and we're not impacting habitat, not leaving rest in you know, materials and stuff. And water and wetlands prices are going up forty percent. And same with Beaver Solutions. Beaver Solutions is like the only company, but you're fine to do beaver work and we have three Beaver Solution devices in Outflows. We have one in Pond on the town forest. We just put another one in Metta Brookwoods and we put that one in this past year because the trail is flooding out and it's a budding private property, so we can't move the trail over. And it's working really well. The beaver pond was even getting pretty close to a Simon Street and now we're, we have a six to ten foot drop of that beaver pond. And they come out, they warranty, they go out every year. It's like, it's one guy and his two nephews and they do a lot of great work. The highway department also have Beaver Solutions come out. We have quite a few beaver ponds along our roads and the highway department goes out, Edward's Island Rains, bringing up the beaver dams. I signed a lot of emergency permits for them to do that work. Checking afterwards to ensure, you know, they're not leaving debris and stuff that we don't want to see in our wetlands. And so they've gotten estimates from Beaver Solutions. They haven't moved forward on them yet, but they're going to do some culvert financing to keep the beavers out of our culverts and so the commission might help on one or two of those. But again, their prices are going up at four percent. And then everything else is the same. Hostage, auto permits have to go out. I certify now to the property owner and NAST E P. And then supplies are the same. I did increase the travel and training by five hundred. And this is just, there's a lot of opportunities that I've taken advantage of. I got my Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners on a mental training. We've had three commissioners out of the seven also do that training, which is great. And then I also took a class with U S A and there's the land protection course for young new career professionals. That was every week through the whole fall and then a treat at the end in Plymouth, which was super fun to meet everyone, but that's you know, those are certificates I have now that that one was both based on open space, so learning things like how landowners can get their property taxes reduced and the benefits of donating their land to the town and what they can use moving forward. Not that I'm a tax master or anything, but I just have those popping points that I didn't have before. So I feel in a much better position than I did this time last year. Which brings, you know, to the other point, I don't think it's in there, but through example, I'd also like to ask for three to five percent merit base. I think that put a lot of effort into this role. I think the feedback I've gotten from community members and engineers and property owners who want to get permits, having someone in the office makes a huge difference. I want to stay here.
I think this was doing great shopping. I am also advocating for that in my recommended budget. Level of which and how that fits into the rest of the board and FinCom to go on and support one way or the other. I know we're in the middle of a compensation and classification study, which complicates matters. The professional organization for conservation agents, I'm going to ask, yeah, but it did a statewide survey and talked about not quite exactly what we're doing, but I, I took their data to leave just, I'll share this, just E V P central region, staffs of one or two with similarly titled agents and all full time above thirty-three and a half hours. It ranges from below a mended to a high, I think that the range started at eighty-two thousand dollars, five hundred. So these are not necessarily all of our comparable communities. This is just central masses, not who we're necessarily looking at in you know, our compensation and classification study. A few of these are in it. Much, and this is, you know, this folks who answer, but in general, you know, there's, there's, I think, two hundred communities that answer. So I'm going to slice this a little bit differently way to say that to say the compensation and classification study is looking at market-based adjustments, kind of diagnostic to the individual. It's looking at how, what is internal parity, classified internally, and then what's external parity compared to peers and similar. I think advocating for this merit-based increase outside of that steps us there, so I don't I'm not advocating to get us to a fifty percent title or top core title or anything like that. I think what this will be will be an ability to smooth what I imagine will be a large increase, some large increase based on a compensation study for fiscal twenty-seven. So that's, that's where I'm going to land on this discussions. Specificity of the topic, or you can talk about whatever you want, whatever.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll note the study. So it came from the Mass Society of Municipal Conservation Professionals, M S N C P. Their, you know, N A, N A C C, the Mass Association of Conservation Commissioners is geared towards con house and stuff. This is just for staff. So not every you know, not every town responded if they don't have staff, they're not in this organization. Some people might have missed it, but I think it does a really great job also showing the range of the number of people in each department, so people who have administrators, having to get higher title. But then, as I said, administrator, agent, admin assistant, so it takes a lot, you know, a permit comes in under the Well and Protection Act, you have twenty-one days to hold the hearing. You have to get the legal ad notice. You have to ensure that they get the certificate of mailings out to everyone. Then you have to go on the site walk, set up the site walk for the commissioners. You know, you you might have like but then you hold the hearing and then it takes me two to three days to actually do these permits. You know. We have a boilerplate of special conditions now that I've built for the commission to use for, they hold different special condition they want in the permit, but it takes a lot checking the deeds, because our permits are reported against the deed. Making sure all those things are, you know, accurate and lined up. And then actually executing the permit, getting it to the person. Making sure they record it before they start work, doing the pre-construction site visit, monitoring construction throughout overtime. Working with the peer reviewers, I work pretty closely with our peer reviewers, professional wetland scientists, and then the planning board P E, who does a lot of our agreements too. Originating between the planning board P E, our wetland scientist, the staffs or the applicants, engineer, applicant, professional wetland scientist, get us all out there. There might be five to fifteen people on site sometimes, especially with these big commercial new things that men didn't have seen before. And I, yeah, I'm just advocating that I think having the role of the agent and the planner on site together, doing these things is going to help protect the town, especially in a town as wet, as mentioned, but also in a town where everyone has their own wells and sewer. It just really intensifies the care.
And I'm glad you brought up the planner piece. So we talked about bringing the planner from point four to one point O as, you know, provide kind of continuity through, through the process and a thirty-hour agent does that as well. And empower any inspection services coordinators or coordinate the whole process between the departments involved. I think brings a professional approach to how, to how we go about permitting development. And I think that's been reflected in spells for.
I have a question concerning permit fees. How do our permit fees compare to surrounding towns? Because I know there was one question once that you were, not just low, but like.
Especially if we're talking about three days and.
That's what I, that's. Our fees competitive?
So our permits have, the, the notice of intent has the state fee, which is set across the board and then the local filing fees. Are they lower? I haven't. Our, the commission is currently looking at the bylaw and so we're following the mass conservation commissions model by bylaw and making some changes to kind of beef up what we want to do and make sure we don't have any pitfalls in our bylaw. And so I wanted to do that first. And then we're going to adopt regulations. We have the regulations right now that set our fees. But there will be, you know, performance standards for all the different well and resource areas, all the different parts of the acts of the Well and Protection Act has eight interests, which is like flood management, wildlife habitat, blah, blah. And so making sure that our performance standards help that. And so with that in our regulations series, the commission will look at the current all of these thing about percentage-wise, we adopted them in two thousand twelve, do we want to do some sort of step increase or do we want to look at surrounding towns? The town of Bellingham, I think, uses all state fees and just divides them in half and that's their permit fees. So there's a lot of different ways the commission can do it, but so for the town amendment, right now, if you're building a new single-family house, the state fee is two hundred and fifty dollars and then our notice of intent fee is thirty dollars. And then you pay a hundred and fifty for the legal ad. And so our thirty-dollar local filing fee, you know, Bellingham, they're asking for a hundred and twenty-five, so that's half of the state, two fifty. So I think we'll get there this year. I'm expecting the bylaw. We're reviewing it tomorrow night. You know, hopefully sending it off to town E B A and then I think we'll start our regulations hearing this spring, summer. So I'm hoping that, you know, we have a good set of fees. The board of health recently has increased their fees. They clearly get I think a three-year period with their minimum fees percentage-wise. And they evaluated the amount of time that Jack and Kelly and the administrator and health agent are spending for permit. So if we want to look at how much review goes into a notice of intent and how much time it takes to write the conditions. You know, those are numbers that now we're with. I didn't have that last year because I hadn't written a permit yet. So I think I'm in a better position to help the missions that their fees hire.
And I think to that point too, one thing, it might be in the financial policy draft. There is, we are, I think we're saying we want to get into a sixth of all review, not, not just conservation fees, but all fees. So conservation was going to be an F Y twenty-six goal when we get to our goal discussion. I'll tell you that right now because we talked about it a year ago. It's, it's an opportunity.
You know, ranging from, you know, you don't want to be burdened some on single-family homes if you're doing a shed pool and those kinds of things, but if you're doing a commercial warehouse of two, three acres, your fee should really be to that for us. We charge thirty dollars. So it should be, you know, it's, it's based on the project and kind of what projects we expect to see amended. We don't have tons of commercial development. But then, you know, still, we don't want to be burdensome to homeowners who maybe they're doing a single-family house and they come to the commission. They have to do the public hearing notice. Then maybe they also have to go to zoning. They have to go to the port of health. Then they have to get their building permits. So you don't want, you know, a hundred dollars in every department. So working to make it.
So, yeah, I have a question. So I know when we first I guess out of this full-time position, we talked about grants and I know you did mention the one trail grant. Can you talk a little bit more about like other like work that you're doing for seeking grants and whether there might be others for financial benefits to your position like? Can we, are, are you seeking other grants?
Yeah, I'm working right now on the green communities grants, although there's that energy. I'm hoping to submit for the schools that are on the H R access though. And then potentially the police department wants a new electric vehicle. Unfortunately, wasn't able to do for the fire electric vehicle that they're getting because the grant deadline is April fourth, we're going to have, or you're not going to receive the grant until August. We're going to have the vehicle by then, so we can't submit retroactively. And so that was one example. The other one I've been looking at is the mass vulnerability preparedness program. I think it's a great candidate for the Providence Street Road Culver. The timelines are pretty close, so there's more to work to look with John Dudley and Jeremy on the M V P grant, but those are recurring grants, you know, design and or construction options. The other one is the public water supply, the talent investigating the public water supply source on Providence Street. And there's a lot of drinking water supply grants and also land acquisition grants geared towards drinking water supplies, so those would be grants pursuing as we would want in that process as well.
So I'm going to bring it up because I thought I heard it during the chief's presentation and it was just brought up now. When we voted to recommend the new vehicle purchases, I asked for FinCom to be involved in the discussion about internal combustion engine versus electric. It seemed that that decision has been made. We were not involved, we're not consulted. I would like to try and figure out how to have these conversations better because if we're now not getting grants for the electric vehicle, I'd like to understand, did we just now end up in a position of we are paying more for the town for the vehicle just so that we can go electric because we like to? I want to know if this was actually no longer financially viable because we didn't get this grant. So.
We never submitted for.
Right, so this was, this was pitched to us, right, as we recommend going forward, we'd like to have discussions about whether internal combustion engine or electric is actually more or less financially viable long-term to the town. I know that we have two select board members who are very bought into electric vehicles. I would like to understand the numbers behind them, not just personal biases, so. So I don't know if we now are in a less financially positive position because we're no longer getting a grant for that vehicle. I'd like to understand the numbers behind.
We appropriated that so.
To Mike's point, we did that knowing that it could go one way or the other, so.
And we voted and we recommended based on it could go one way or the other and we would have a discussion based on, you know, being part of the discussion for the choice. And we weren't included.
I think it gets back to at the point of appropriation, Jeremy. We sometimes do these things conditionally, saying we're willing to appropriate the money. Let's not expend it right away until there's probably discussions is one of a couple I can think of. I think we just got to kind of stay on point on those types of agreements at the point of voting. I wasn't aware we didn't get the grant, honestly, to the E V.
The money wasn't appropriated to last the grant.
Thank you for talking about the grant. It wasn't submitted for, so the special town leak of the fire in the fall. The grant deadline had closed in October, so that wasn't.
No, 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 yeah, but this is not on you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm bringing about a, an operational point at the moment and when FinCom voted to recommend part of the spiel about the purchase of the vehicle and the fact that there could be a benefit financially to going with an electric vehicle for both of the options, part of it was grants that come from either state or federal. And I wanted to make sure that this committee was involved in making the most financially responsible choice for the town. That could be the electric vehicle based on grants and everything available to try and get people to buy these things and install all the stuff. But that may not be true and I wanted to make sure that we were making the most financially sound decision based on whether we were getting grants or not. Clearly, we did not get a grant. So fully confusion that we need to rectify.
I, I would say this to the point on E V, I think we should probably have a conversation from a strategy standpoint, so if you have to go into Connect three fifty-one, whether or not we actually want to more focus on E V transition or not, because there are grants for. EV transition or not, because there are grants for 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 fleet charging ports. That could be quote free of charge. Nothing's free, but my point, so so we can avoid the uh one off discussion on. Should we or should we not more of a, if we're actually gonna get an EV, which I personally would lean towards for some vehicles. I would like that to be our position agreed upon so that we're not going to hinder any purchases going forward when we appropriate. You know, we know we're gonna lean one way or the other and 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 but we should have that conversation. So going forward, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll just note on the green community side, if we're gonna move forward to the climate leader. You're gonna have to deorganize all your vehicles. Um, and then. For like police and fire, these emergency vehicles, you can still buy it, let uh. Gas, but it has to be certain. Must be a gallon. To for us, the meatball by a street communities, like you don't wanna buy a gas car and then get booted out.
And this is not necessarily limited to to vehicles. I mean, when you look at, you know, is it Wellesley? I mean, their whole fleet is going. They're testing like the. Police cruisers are now being outfitted as EVs. That was never done before. Their parks department. Electric in terms of their equipment, mowers, trimmers, everything. You know what I mean? So there's a, there's an opportunity if we choose to go in that direction to look at an EV strategy. And I think we should probably have that discussion and sort of a an agreement on do we or don't we? So we don't run into one offs like this.
Yeah, I would love to have a strategy in place and just because it's good for one town doesn't mean it's good for the other. So.
That is true of many things.
So it's back to the the green communities grant. So you said there uh so that. Um, that's underway. Is that that process, that application process? And so it's.
Yeah, I was reading, I was reading. And so going back to the. Company who gave the proposal and getting the rest of the requirements for green communities. For the police legal, I've just heard the police may be looking to submit one. So I don't have any information on. Cars in our there is restricted to done like how much you can apply flow of deeds grants. So. The green communities, if you're looking for a car, is that thousand five hundred and we are a special designated communities and overpriced as much as they think thousand. Uh, I think the limit on like big buildings or things is around five thousand if you're a special team. So five hundred thousand. So different requirements for different ages submitting.
And what is what is the amount applied for for the for the uh for the club?
I haven't gotten that far. So we're also working to see, I can see we have a green communities. Like the Exxon help and then the state are which all come here. Um. I think the proposal that I had is for two hundred and fifty thousand.
It was about two hundred and fifty.
So I think.
Round up.
And did we know like anyway, they're out like what we can submit for?
Okay.
Uh, the the goal would be to ask.
Did we know really what kind of chances we have of getting this funding?
It seems like London is in good standing. Is this and these are, this is a state grant for green communities?
Yes. Is it Massachusetts guys?
Yes. I I. I think of all like, you know, same with the master's grant. I don't know.
Yeah.
We uh just hit that milestone reduction, right? The twenty percent, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we hit it a while ago and then just started. Yeah, we are, we are one of the communities in good standing.
Actually, can you since, yeah, could you just say a little bit about, I mean, it's still running up. Could you just say a little bit about what that is for those of us? I mean, for for people?
That then became a green communities designation. On time at the twenty ten. And they reduced their energy consumption by twenty percent overall in like municipal buildings and vehicles and things like that. And. So we got recognized at the Green Communities Conference in the fall. And they gave like a little plaque, I think, um, as one of the communities that has produced.
But then it sounds like that also gives an edge with some of these uh grant applications. So.
Then along with in incorporating an energy coordinator position into our. General fund. That's sort of the commitment they're waiting to see. So by doing that last year, we kind of.
Right.
We did double duty in terms of like getting in good standing.
Right. And then it's just a list of it's grant funded as well, right? So the uh this bill salary, I think, is no, it's not. Is it through CPA or just through different lines?
So there was a one of them wrapped, so one of those state funds that um covered. Was a little less than quarter or something last year. Okay. For this for the current year, this was my but this was my six.
Okay, all right. Now I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They watched yours.
So that's uh we have uh anywhere anywhere else. Then if you could just introduce yourselves or I mean, most of us know you, but I'm lying or people want to hear you later.
I'm Jay By, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jeremy, did you have anything you wanted to start with?
Um, so the school district comprises um not quite half, but almost half of our budget. Um, so I think it's important that we um um we talk about kind of the ins and outs of that a little bit about the formula. Um, but. I think it's also a great opportunity to take um. Take this time to talk about the. Um, articles at town meeting and the resulting ballot questions for uh debt exclusion. Um, I will say, um, after this. Joint uh meeting voted last week, um, I had a meeting with Jay Martin and Tom Major Joe from Upton. Um, and earlier today, um, Jay had sent me language to split out the article and the ballot question. Um, from athletic fields and building projects. So um, the so um, it was the.
I'm assuming the Upton town manager was in alignment with our votes.
Um, his respective committees did not take a formal vote. Um, so he was not representing their position. Uh, but I. It's my interpretation that he was glad to see him split them as well. Uh, but he wasn't speaking for either of them.
I think so. And on that, we recommended also to school committee that meeting that is split after talking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
So we have a presentation.
Sound the website. Actually, who's broadcasting on the screen? Sure. Is that you? All right, it's on the website then that was.
So you want to join our meeting? Or tell me where it is.
Go up.
This is a good segue. All of you can access all of our documents. Uh, we don't have them printed, but if if you want it, we can present it. We have a full budget book. It's like sixty seven people's long that we do every year. That's looking at, when you go to our website. You click on, there's a actually link right on the web that I find that's that's a budget. And then it brings the right to the seat and all the documents are there. So the line item that's proposed. On Monday, the budget book and this presentation. And then our past years there as well.
Every, every year, every year, yes.
I don't think all that printing would align with green communities.
We did. And on Monday, we had our opening conference hearing and what we have tonight is that presentation. When we present there, it's about an hour, a half an hour. We're gonna just quickly go through it. Uh, but. And we'll be, it will be a full hour on presentation, but it's. And it's similar to what we've done. You should feel like you, you should take all the time that you need. We're 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 prepared to camp.
Yeah.
All right. So if uh if you just go to.
I am, yeah. Okay. Want me to join the meeting then?
The screen is going like every other slide. It's really making it go faster. No, it's over. Like, yeah, it's over. Like that next to the limits.
Why do I have to share? I should.
You are.
You should. You do.
Others did an update in the middle of the meeting.
According to transcription, I don't know. Right, we're on. So our goals tonight are what we presented a couple nights ago. In our auditorium is to give you a little bit of a background on our budget development process. To talk about some of our short term and long term budget priorities, which, you know, some you'll see if you've been paying attention the last few years, they're similar, but we do have changes each year. And we'll present our proposals budget that was related on Monday by the school committee. And we spent some time talking about how we balance the budget this year. And right at the end, we talk about challenges and some of the main variables that exist. I always like to start. I always like to start, what do you? With our enrollment, just to give you a sense of our enrollment. And last year, we were at two thousand and seventy two as well. We are four hundred and three staff. That's all of the staff that work in our district. So that can range from. Administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria, custodians.
One of us.
One of us, yeah. Um, every everyone that's there. And uh, our, on the next slide. Next slide, I always like to show the fact that uh we have NESTEC that comes in every year. They do an external review of our historical projected enrollment. And what I like about this one is just emphasizing where we are in their projections. You'll see that we've had a decline. I've talked about it last couple of years. We're in that midpoint. And we expect in the next ten years that we'll be getting about maybe up to two hundred students. However, it can change, right? That's just projections, basically what they think. But we've been in this middle range and it's been flat the last couple of years.
Have we ever gone back and looked at what they've projected and what the actuals are and how accurate the projections are?
A little bit. Uh, I mean, I haven't done the full analysis. It's not, uh, we had a five year. Budget presentation by a consultant that came in and followed. And, you know, he kind of looked more on our actuals rather than he didn't focus so much on what NESTEC was saying. Because it it does vary. Um, what I like is just kind of tracking some of those trends. They. And we also, in our enrollment, you know, we're bringing in school choice as well. Which adds and maintains some. So our district is becoming increasingly more diverse. We've been tracking this. I have a chart like at the end of the budget book that you'll be able to see. That shows uh our growth over the last ten years in particular. We are required, of course, we would meet and attend to all learners' needs, but there are a lot of mandates about what we. Need to provide for services. So one thing I talked about on Monday is the growth in our uh. Students whose first language is not English or English bars. And we have just went through a review and they identified in the review and it's gonna come out and report that. We don't have enough English language uh teachers to meet the required minutes that. They need to receive because the kids been growing so quickly. Uh, so that's something that in a future budget that we would. Be putting in there. We did add one, you know, teacher a couple of years ago. We have based it in, usually. Funding and phased it into the budget for years, but it's still. You're gonna need to add another one at some point. Um, but we do track this in, just so you are there like on our, if you're ever looking for data about schools. It's really easy to find kind of everything you ever wanted to know, uh, or not know or didn't know this. Sometimes I'm always surprised because when I go and say. Uh, on the dusty site, they have school profiles and you could go and search and look back for new years. And so you do financials, you do staffing, students, attendance, et cetera. I also like to always start, even though we're talking about a lot of numbers, that the numbers are actually. People and our students of our people organization and our our clients, our community, our parents and. You know, first and foremost, our students that we serve. And our mission is to empower outlanders to thrive. And I shared this on this next slide, our why. Our why, this was our inspired learning day the other day. And I was watching these two students who were building, they were, we're using a Spiro robot. And they were building a course and I just happened to capture the moment when they met the goal. They got it over, but it didn't go off the track. And then they were just, you know, shouting and jumping up and it's those moments of like awe. That's what I love. We do tie our strategic goals and our strategic plan and mission and beliefs into our decision making. Uh, and we every, I would say we are very mission driven organization. We look at our strategic goals and it drives everything that we do. This is our mission and our core beliefs about learning. We're in year two of our strategic plan and this is where it airs our theory of action. And we always bring, come back to this in all our presentations um at the school committee. And oh, we in the five year plan, we have four main strategic priorities in deeper learning, developing high quality curriculum instruction. Focusing on equity and inclusion, well being, students, belonging, and also engaging all of you and keep and gathering community support. Different ways. And uh this year, um. And our focus on return on investments in our students, and this was another example from inspiring recording day where they were. Interviewing Principal Bell over at Memorial and uh they were news reporters and then they were interviewing their classmates. Um, what I I'd like to point out related to all this is the growth of. What we've been doing throughout the years. So going back to our last strategic plan. And then through COVID, through uh twenty twenty three, and then starting in twenty twenty three is when we had our next strategic. Year year two and already, I can't believe that heading into year three is when build this budget for next year. Um, but we've been building. So some of the things that I I highlight as examples are project lead the way. It's um engaging. It's we get lots of grants to help supply. We just actually got two grants of thirteen thousand this past week. Uh, we it builds out science. We started the middle school, expanded to high school, expanded to elementary. You can see that through line here. Or other things that we're really focusing on, we're focusing on social learning. Fortunately, we were doing it before we hit the hand pandemic because then we really needed it after pandemic and so didn't recover from that. Um, and it's something that we noticed was hit with the pandemic again, learning was like reading and writing. We probably all know, might as well, they're on computers and we're still recovering from that. So just a lot of focus on literacy. You can see some of my investments in there. And what we're really proud about the high schools, we've built out uh. It would call ICP for short, but innovative career pathways. So numerous pathways when we're getting state grants. In order to have an innovative program, like computer science or environmental sciences in the years. I'll do some highlights there. I could go on and on. That's not why we're here. But just to give you a sense of the investments. This is when we talk about return on investments, this is how we build a line. Um, I gave some highlights just of. I gave some highlights, just of some recent investments and how we're seeing some turnaround. Elementary math was one, we put in an investment into our open architects and iReady are some of the data systems that we use. Few years, bridges and ST Math, bridges is a curriculum, high-quality resource, we're going to talk about that being something that we want to invest in. We've seen a great turnaround and have improvement as a result of that. And as you know, we went from not, you know, we already were one-to-one with iPods at the middle and high school, but we didn't expand it with COVID. And that gives us access to do programs like ST Math or other programs. Um Misco, uh we've been focused, doing a lot of things to focus on growth at Misco. In particular, we've had a dip in achievement the last number of years, like since I've been in the district in that fifth to sixth grade. And trying to figure out what are all the different things that led to that. Well, one thing we discovered was the kids were transitioning a lot between classes. We were able to, last year we reallocated, we took a position because we had a bubble coming through in the eighth grade and moved it to the fifth grade, lower class size, less transitions. Huge impact on the environment, our students coming into the middle school. We brought in iReady assessment, we're checking into informal assessments all the time. And then we're piloting MyView, which is in the framework. Resources this year, and we've already seen our reading scores will be tracked going up this year. So we're seeing that our investments and our, what we're focusing on for change is having some impact, sometimes really quickly, sometimes it will take three years. And then finally, Netbook, a lot of amazing things going on there, we're hosting a conference tomorrow for members all throughout the state. Because we're part of the Mastery Transcript Consortium where our students are building, in addition to their transcript, they're building a mastery learning record aligned to our portfolio. Competencies, which we build all throughout K through twelve. And what they're doing is they, when they go to college and apply to college, they have their typical transcript that we all know. And then they have the story that is who, who they are. And so you can see some examples over here, we're building it starting in ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. And our students are getting into places that we didn't get into before as a result of this. So we're one of the, one of the few that do this for public schools in Massachusetts and are. Tomorrow and then our innovative career, innovative career pathways are huge and they do require some curriculum and staffing. We get grants to start off and then we have to phase in resources over time. But it's other opportunities for our students. Outside of what we traditionally were doing in the past. We're excited about computer science and this is some finance and marketing. And then finally, just a big focus on deeper learning, I already talked about project lead the way and some of the leveling up of authentic learning. But we have a lot of showcases, we want to bring in outside folks to come in and have our students present to. And project-based learning, we have increased at the middle school, we were part of the rep in three years. We focused on a lot of intensive training for our teachers to make sure all of our students are having these experiences. Our favorite one is the picture up in the right corner. And Jen was, you know, at the table, you can't stand there, they were doing a shark tank. So they took a math lesson and turned it into shark tank kind of presentations. And we gave feedback and it was incredible, but that's an example. That's to like for our students. And finally, we have uh just examples of the many ways that we know that learning doesn't just take place in the classroom, right? It works on the field, we know it's on stage. Know that art and drama and incredible programming that we support. And in many ways are the reasons why students come to school, right? I'd love to think they all come for ELA and math and science, who can do. Uh but some, they're there because of the sports team they're in or in here, that little group that they presented to NASA. They did this great project, they are flying to California, they're going down to Florida. They, I mean, the nice thing is they interacted with NASA like on their projects is incredible. I wish I could give you all the details, I can't because it's way above me, but uh it's, it's amazing. We kind of get some teachers that are offering, we have two teachers of the year this year in Massachusetts. We have our science STEM teacher here, Jen Forman, and also the social studies teacher here, Josh C. Daniels, so that's, that's some of them. So then, that's just a little quick highlight, hopefully I went as fast as I could, it's like a talk forever. So budget development, we always start with our, you know, budget development calendar, just give everyone a sense of where we're at. And we just had a budget hearing. Over past that point, but just to know that the, we'd like to point out, as you will know, of course, budget takes place all throughout the year. The next part is just the timeline, we really are trying to be as transparent as we can. So we have a meeting, as best as my ability to remember to put the presentation up. Because I'm the one doing the web. Web page two is, you know, I try to get them up there and we started having all of our departments do presentations and have a consistent format. So you can kind of track what they talked about, short-term, long-term goals as well. Every year we talk a little bit about guiding principles, this year we focus on of course student-centered decision-making. We want to know, make decisions about our budget with that principle in mind. But we, number two was really important this year, is maintaining level services and it's just the maintenance of these level services. The third we want to talk about is our principal stewardship and transparent communications I just mentioned. That we know that we have capital projects coming forward this year and that impacted a lot of our decision-making of maintaining our services. And we've been really appreciative of you loving working with Jeremy. Everyone's coming to our meetings all the time, it's awesome to have you there. But to have a fly-by-the-approach has been really helpful for us too. Our goals of fear align to the high-quality curriculum, which I've already talked about. Making sure we're maintaining that, continuing our multi-tiered systems of support, that's kind of like an education term, MTSS for short. But that came out of COVID, we want to make sure that all of our students are meeting all of their needs. And that's where that falls. And then a lot of the work that we're really super proud of is that deeper learning work and making sure our students are prepared. When we look at all of the factors that can come into making priorities around our budget. A lot of these remain the same, strategic goals, community expectations that have been shared with us of what they want. Financial considerations that are there, and then we have a lot of fixed cost mandated programming. Someday I'm going to, every PR will say, next year I'm going to create a document that shows people all of the unfunded mandates that we have to comply with in education. Haven't done it yet, but I started it, but you know, there's a lot that we have to do that we actually don't. Compromises and some of those are those categories. On the bottom, we talk about, we know that there's women in town and state revenue, Jay's going to talk about that. We have the fixed costs, healthcare went up this year, I know it did for many towns across the board. Uh we know there's a high likelihood of reduced federal funds, we're already getting glorifications that even came out this week of funding related to food. And we might be impacted by that, that came out this week. And we will talk a lot about how we balance the budget this year is increasing the use of resources. I'm not going to go through the SWOT analysis, but I do have our team do a SWOT analysis, so I'm sure different like strengths, weaknesses, opportunity spreads. A lot stays the same each year, some things we've added and changed. Keeping an eye on class sizes, keeping them small as much as we're able to, that's definitely for us. But then we added in this year, the bottom and opportunities for growth for new, answer about tier two and tier three supports. When you think of what it is, tier one is supports that you give everybody, everyone gets the same thing. But then some people might need a little bit more targeted support, that would be tier two. And then the classrooms, maybe outside of the classroom. But then you get to tier three and that's more specialized support and that would be fewer, it's almost like a triangle, fewer, or fewer, that would get that. We've done a great focus on tier one, working on tier two, but we still are working developing our tier three. And uh funding for out-of-school learning opportunities because we want our students to have authentic experiences. We're sending them places, they're going on field trips. None of that is, is funded by the school district.
I'll say my third grader has yet to be on a field trip in Menlo County School District.
I, I have, we, I have been communicating to, to Liz, yes. He is very jealous that his brother has experienced field trips and he has seen others go on field trips, he has yet to leave.
The, the buses, they aren't in the budget for all these field trips, so parents have to pay for that. And it, that can add up particularly as they get older. So when they go to middle and high school, there are tons of, you know, trips and different opportunities they kind of experience. It's usually at L M, you try to give it in every, every level and that went away with COVID and we've been doubling it back, so. Make sure we get the third grade, next year we go, that was amazing. Uh but it's been said to say this is important and not be able to add it into the budget as well. When we're looking at how we make decisions, you can see uh we don't want to go into reduced services. But we've been tracking kind of the gap and what we needed to close over the last four years since I, I've been in this position. And we're maintaining and sometimes we've had some targeted needs and the critical needs are strategic investments here and there. But we're, we're approaching the point where we're reducing enough that we're almost in the reduced services, not quite there, we're still trying to maintain. So when we get our budget requests, we kind of sort them, we talk about them and start on the bottom of the level services. And we, enrollment and maintaining class sizes always is the first thing. Our ELA and math teacher, they were removed from the budget last year that helped us get through last year. Because we had a really small bubble of students coming through A three. And one allocated, um one we didn't fill, one was allocated to fifth grade to help with those class size numbers. We have a lot of evidence of them doing that and been throughout the years. We have a lot of their class sizes now coming up and I'll show them another slide, but we would be class sizes up to twenty-nine if we didn't fill those two positions. So those remain, and then Spanish immersion, we have strands at each, we're building back the strands at each of the. Elementary schools and we have, if we have enough students, we do that, we almost have full strands at both, so we can have. We actually are oversubscribed, we have uh more people interested in up to right now than we have spots. So we're looking for, maybe they'd be able to come over here, which we hadn't done in the past. But there's a lot of interest there. And then when you go into the needs base, I, I talked about the EL teacher, that's one that we haven't filled, but definitely is going to have to be at the top of this because of the findings. And we're keeping an eye on our kindergarten a little bit, that's the grade one. When we look at class sizes, we don't, some school districts will have a policy that says you have to have a certain amount for a class size max. And we don't have that, but these are the best practices that we determined as a team and tried and adhere to. It's not perfect science where you can just distribute, you know, across evenly, it, it does vary. And we track enrollment throughout the year and a lot of kids will come in just mid-years sometimes too. Uh the average class size right now, K to eight, I've just highlighted those that are twenty-three, twenty-four. You're never going to have equal parity like between S, the Spanish immersion and, because you can't balance that out with the non-Spanish immersion classes, so just know that. We, when I look at this, I say, we have really good class sizes in our district. And that leads to excellent instruction, small group help, a lot of personalized instruction, it's, it's where you want to be. We do not want to be in class, once you approach especially elementary and middle and you're getting to twenty-five and middle school rooms are pretty small, that's a lot of kids. Now, the high school, I say at the bakeries because it's based on a student interest. So you may have an AP class that has nine kids in it. You may have a mixed group class with art of like four different levels in one and that's twenty kids. You may have twenty-eight and a, you know, pre-calc. It, so it varies, we don't like twenty-eight and I figured it over thirty, but sometimes we have the extreme. Tracking that as well. Um so this is the Misco one where if we didn't have the two, it would be twenty-nine. And this is an example of Memorial. And we keep an eye on incoming kindergarten and if it gets to be too hot, that, that would be sometimes. And we, even though we do kindergarten enrollment right now and we have a sense of numbers, you can actually come in at any time you want and say you want to enroll with your kindergarten. Sometimes they'll show up the first day or the day before and we won't know and you might get to a point. So that's my very.
So I need to talk about the. As opposed to all the fun stuff.
Money's fun.
Money's fun, yeah. Alright, so two weeks ago, we presented the school committee at that point, we still had a. Dow shortfall, we had closed national shortfall, it's not elusive, a lot of various sources of revenue. But that's kind of the history of where we've been at going through time. On the expenditure side, I'll go quickly through a couple of these, these are state function codes, this is how the state has us report our expenditures. Instruction is the biggest, you know, biggest category, that's in the two thousand series, but that's how that breaks out. If you look at our budget in particular, you look at employee salaries and employee benefits, that's about seventy, seven percent of our budget. So the majority of our money goes to people that are delivering instruction. And all those costs, the rest of them are broken out there, you can see.
Okay, how's that tracking all the time?
It's been about the same for, I've been doing this by chart for about fifteen years, it's been pretty much the same. It hasn't really changed much, out-of-district tuition was much higher, that's come down in the last probably five years. The rest has been about the same.
Pulling out Aggie, probably dropped that too, right?
Uh well, yeah, that was, that wasn't out-of-district, I mean, it did get categorized in there over the state function code, so yeah, that did help us.
One thing that you don't see a difference is in instruction supplies. There are some years that we have to have an investment in a new curriculum series. Or, or anywhere at the, our A to five series right now, and that's a really significant investment. So some years you'll see that go up, maybe it's not like, let's say fifty thousand maybe this year. You know, because we're buying some textbooks and then it might be flat. And that, that, that's probably the one I think that varies between years.
One of the things that happens with the curriculum is generally you do six-year licensing, that's kind of how they sell it, but then you pay in two years. And where I would like to spread it out over six years, but the company's not allowed to do that. So kind of you'll have a big bump for two years, then you have to save exactly. The main drivers this year, obviously salaries are our biggest driver. Right now, we're looking at a nine percent increase in our health insurance, that has still not been finalized. I would like to see it come down, I'm not sure it's going to at this point.
Only one digit?
Um it has worked out well, except that the claims processing was through a company called HPI, which is owned by Harvard Global. They've been important. Uh next year we're going to Harvard Global as the claims processing, which should straighten out a lot of problems. Every day I'm dealing with health insurance issues. I highlighted lane changes this year, typically what lane change is, is when a teacher gets and it furthers their degree status. They might move from a masters to a masters plus fifteen or thirty or forty-five. This year it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of lane changes, typically in past years it's been forty, fifty thousand, so this was a fairly big jump. I don't have a real reason for that, maybe they took a lot of courses during the pandemic time when it was time, you know, at that time.
I, I think part of it is, uh we have a lot of, we've had some turnover in retirement and we have a lot. Of teachers in something, I don't know, I, I can go and look at what it's due to us, but part of it is they do move pretty quickly when they come in. And they're, they get their masters right away and then there's just lane changes that happen more quickly than compared to when you're already.
There's a drop-off towards the end. The value proposition of your investment versus the lane change.
For, for health insurance, how many plans do we offer, can you go into some detail?
Uh so health insurance, we, it's uh again, through this mass strategic health, it's under the Harvard Global network. We've offered what's called an EKIO, which would be similar to what an HMO is. The only difference is that you don't need referrals to go to specialists, you can kind of go where you want, but you have to stay in that one. Then we offer a PPO, which you're probably not a lot often, but we did have to, I'll be honest with you, but some people choose that. And then we have family plans and these tangible plans, we do not have a plus one.
Have we looked into high deductible plans?
Uh we have a high deductible plan in the past before we went into this room and we got, we had a lot of problems. We had a fifty, hundred dollars, three thousand dollar deductible. For F like twenty-four, we had it for a second or eight years. It was an issue with how those claims were being processed, we were paying the deductible symbol, what does it mean, does as well. When we went into this plan, um the plan we were on with the deductible was looking at a fifteen point six percent increase. And this plan gave us a six percent increase, so, and with no deductible, so that's why we switched. We prefer to stay with the no deductible, it's been better financially. I looked at next year and we do have options to go to the deductible, it actually ended up costing us more. Financially, I looked at next year and we do have options to go to the deductible. It actually ended up costing us more because we had to pay the.
So why do we have to pay the deductible?
Well, we'd have to negotiate. Uh, but since the teachers, you have to negotiate that. They don't want to pay up more than cost, so you find yourself struggling with that.
Have we looked into that?
Yeah, we negotiated last year. As a matter of fact, this plan we're on, they have to vote to stay in this plan or go back to the previous plan on the condition that we continue to pay the deductible. Go back to them. To negotiate, well, I don't disagree with you, but when we first went to it, it was the only way to get the teachers to agree to go to the deductible plan. And it's still saving us money. So that was the reason. But the long term. Yeah, that was probably two thousand fourteen or something like that.
No, I mean, it's just, when you're looking at a nine percent growth and this is kind of a year over years, unsustainable.
Well, as you know, health insurance is all based on your loss ratio and it's claims versus premiums. Um, a self-funded plan, at least the plan we're in, if there's a surplus at the end, let's say your loss ratio is ninety two percent. Uh, we get to keep the eight percent. If you're on a fully insured plan, they get to keep the eight percent. We also get. Prescription rebates that drug companies give to the health insurance companies. We get those into our account. So it's more beneficial, but you're right. We've looked at a lot of different things. I agree with you. Nine percent is a lot.
I mean, you know, ours is nineteen point nine two.
Well, this year it looks good. Next year, if your plan starts, one of this is that we do have a stock loss plan as part of the program. It's been playing for over a hundred and fifty thousand. That are probably through the stock loss gap. Stock gap loss, I forget what it's called now. It's late, um, but there's a plan in hundred as well, because that's one of the things, um, we get reports monthly of like the highest fifteen planes, not the individuals who they are. But, you know, some health insurance claims can be five, six hundred thousand dollars.
We had reference, the town's loss ratio last year was a hundred and two, a hundred and six percent, something like that. So, um. Our tier paid out more in the make, so that's part of the look back that drives what I'm.
Not to get in the whole health insurance issue on a national level, but the way it's working right now.
I, I watched the meeting. So I said, single digit.
Well, I was hoping for two, so that's a shot for me. Let's keep going. Transportation's up a little bit longer, a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's a, we're on a three-year contract. We're going into year three with Calcino and Sons. Uh. The issue you have with transportation is it goes out to bid every three years. We have never gotten one of them, and no one in district or on the state's given one of them one bid, just sort of like every, every bus that passes their districts, nobody can beat us.
It's a rise.
Um, we are responsible with the district for paying the tuition for students to choose to go to charter schools. We're looking at a fifty seven thousand dollar increase for that. We do get reimbursement for a couple of seconds, what reimbursement is. Instructional supplies, those are textbooks and various other things. With the retirement for us this year, it was only forty two thousand. I expected it to be a hundred thousand. I think that's about what the town got. And the town about being got a two hundred thousand hour increase, so I was pretty grateful about that. It's still in the process. Um, salaries, if you break them all out, instruction for teachers, ADAs, paraprofessionals, instructional staff, uh, it's a little over twenty million. Support staff is one point one, maintenance one point two, administration one point nine. The net increase is one million, three hundred sixteen, but our total payroll is right now estimated at twenty five million, eight eighty three. Um, this is the part about health insurance I just talked about. So we're in this group now, you know, so mass strategic health group is a joint purchasing group, Harvard Open Healthcare, we'd be administrators. Company called NFP is sort of like the consulting company that puts it all together. We had been working with NFP for the last twenty five years at least, so we're fairly confident with that. Um, but I haven't got a loss rate due. That was asked if I think, um, January, might have been December. I don't know if I've got January. Alright, on the state side. Chapter seventy this year is up seventy five dollars, student in the governor's budget. That's great. This was only thirty dollars a year, a student last year. Transportation is up. That's great because last year we had a reduction in our transportation reimbursement. There you can see our charter reimbursement is up thirty thousand, but remember our tuition is up almost sixty thousand. So that's why keeping up. Our state aid is up just about two and a half percent. That's positive.
Just to compare it to the year prior, so, um, the governor's budget for fiscal twenty five had what, instead of thirty five dollars? And then the ultimate past budget had something.
So we expect that seventy five to go up. I'm hoping to like a hundred, but going from seventy five student to a hundred student. Is thirty thousand dollars for us. So it's not a big, huge revenue source at this point. We are what's considered a minimum A district. What that means is that unless we have a massive influx of low income or enrollment growth. We're not going to get anything more than the minimum A, which is going to be whatever's in the budget at this point, seventy five dollars a student based on the year.
Just, um, if you. Talk to any of our local legislators, like areas to, um, there's a meeting, I think it's, uh, these means, I think they're meeting on Monday. Like a notification today that, um. To advocate, we're trying to ask like from the superintendent's organization, a hundred and fifty, uh, would be, you know, double what I just said, right? You know, so we wanted it up there and then the transportation reimbursement, uh, that is also an area that if we can get more funding. Should we make a chart? But those are two areas that if you're in contact with advocacy can help you and now is, is the time to.
And many people have heard about the Student Opportunity Act that was put in place a few years ago. We get pretty much zero from that act. Um, if we were a low-income community, we would get a lot more. We have got a couple of Student Opportunity Act grants.
And it's based on your grants to. For like a hundred and thirty thousand a year, but if it's the last year of that grant.
Alright, so here's the history of our state aid over the, what I did with these charts, if I mind, from the last ride for this district was for FY sixteen. If you will get from sixteen to twenty six, our state aid has grown at a rate of a hundred, one point two five percent. That's not a lot of big growth. That category is in its, for a compound and po- compounded annual growth rate, which is a. Something all the finance people just love to talk.
Right? They do.
Chapter seventy, that's our main funding source is up point seven one percent last.
Get too excited. Don't get too excited.
You know, the state has gone through a period where they want local communities to fund more education. They have, um, what they call target share. The state target share is a fifty nine, forty one percent rate. But depending on how fluid your community is, you can go on as high as eighty two and a half percent that they expect the local communities to fund. Menden and Upton's target share is eighty two and a half percent. Menden's at its target share, Upton's not, and that's why you see the state. Transportation reimbursement is split by law, supposed to be a hundred percent, but there's a caveat to that law that says subject to appropriation and they choose not to. So basically, so you can see last year we were down to just a, you know, a little over seventy two percent, went up to seventy seven percent, but six years ago, we were at ninety six percent. So it goes up and down, but that's kind of where that is. Um, circuit breaker is another revenue source. Circuit breaker is.
Jay, what is more impactful to the overall budget? Like, would we want it? If I, if I had to ask for one thing, improve chapter seventy funds or a hundred percent reimbursement on transportation?
Maybe it's like it just felt that one here.
If either one of them amounted to five hundred thousand dollars, I'd take either one.
Yeah, 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 but I just didn't know which one. Yeah, I only care about us.
Circuit breaker is a program that reimburses us for out-of-district tuition. The way that works is the first four times your per pupil enrollment. We have to fund everything after that. They fund about seventy five percent of it. So let's say you have an out-of-district placement tuition that's costing a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The first fifty five or so we have to pay. The rest of it is split by reimbursement. That goes for private or, you know, collaborative public school.
Is that lagging or are you getting back?
We are a year ahead, yes. So what we receive in FY twenty five, we will offset tuitions for in FY twenty six. We're a year ahead of that. You're only allowed to carry it over for one year. Uh, we have gotten to fund, we're doing that, we're trying to consistently stay there. But it is also really fail-safe in case something drastic comes up. You have to keep in mind that some out-of-district tuitions. Even in our district, you know, we've got a couple that are in the four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars a year range. A part of the reason you see those last three years are a little bit higher is because they're now reimbursed for transportation as well. So it gives you a little bit better bump. This is our charter reimbursement. I talked about that. So what you can see in FY twenty two, we were at forty nine percent. Right now for FY twenty six, we're at eight point three percent. So it's great that they increased our revenue, but they also increased the tuition and we're responsible for that tuition. On the local side, um, the enrollment percentages have varied. It's been about forty four, six, fifty six percent is the split, but. Couple of years ago, lower and for next year, then it's going to be even lower at a little over forty two percent. It does push a little bit of the burden out of Upton and that's reflecting where the sponge is landed this year.
This is your October first enrollment?
Based on that total one that we report to the state.
Are we, are we just seeing lower? Lower population of children? Are we seeing them go elsewhere?
No, I think what we're seeing is a lot. I think it's seven thousand projects that are bringing down their children in the building. So like Memorial School is probably only about seventy kids below its capacity. Plus, it's probably a hundred and twenty below its capacity. It's just growing up and, and, you know, we have a big housing movement and then we're going to have the same effect here. Brief explanation of how the town's local assessment is calculated. What we do is we take your total budget, you subtracting that, everything that's predetermined. State aid and district money we put into it and the two towns' minimum local contribution, the balance of that is split by the enrollment percentage. So when one town has a very large minimum contribution increase, that really impacts what happens in the other town. So we'll start with Upton because the town has really had an issue this year. Their minimum local contribution is up six hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. That's a fairly substantial increase and probably more, it is more than they can really afford to pay as a net increase to the district. It would be if Menden were to get a similar minimum contribution increase, I think that would probably be about seventy five or eighty percent. Yes, the case in Upton.
And then MLC is calculated, how again?
It's based on income levels in the town and property values in the town. So as was referenced a few other nights, uh, when people are paying a hundred thousand dollars over asking price for houses. That's where you see it. So Upton has given us a number and said that they would try to fund five hundred ninety three, almost five hundred ninety four thousand as net increase. And they're doing that in order to basically get something out of Menden because if they were doing less, then Menden would have a decrease next year in their. You know, with their appropriation or their assessment of the town. Historically, for Upton, they've been a growth rate of about two point six percent over the last eleven years. Menden, Menden is giving these net zero increase for next year. Uh, your minimum contribution was only of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So you've got six, six twenty and one twenty. That's what impacts it. So in order for Menden to be at level. Upton is contributing more. Originally, they gave us a number of about three hundred and sixty thousand. Then it was going to have a decrease in a hundred and seventy two thousand and we would have had a net increase in like locally at three hundred thousand dollars, which really is. I mean, it's great and it's not enough. Menden's growth rate over the last eleven years is only about one point six percent. Now, some of that, you can see there was a dip in twenty four, I think that Menden actually had a decrease that year. If there was another year that happened. So. On the district side, E and D is basically this comparable free cash in a local town. We've been appropriating a million dollars for the last couple of years. We're going to do that again for next year. Uh, we have a physician that we share salary and benefits with, with the town of Upton, related to technology. That's going to go up a little bit just because the salary and the benefits are going up. Transporting for revolving, we run several programs that, uh, bring revenue into the district. We typically have funded a hundred and fifty thousand a year out of that. We're going to increase that this year to three hundred and twenty five thousand in order to get this budget balanced. We will be able to do that next year because it does start to deplete some of the reserves, but right now they've got some money in the accounts. Interest were increasing from ten thousand to a hundred thousand, similar to what Jeremy just said. We approached our bank a year ago and said, you're not giving us enough in interest, you know. I think they were giving us point one percent or zero, one percent. They updated it to four and a half percent.
Yeah, we're at four point, like three.
Yeah. So we are bringing in more revenue and we probably will bring in more revenue than that hundred thousand, but since I don't know what interest rates are going to be over the next year. We want to be conservative there. We get reimbursed from the federal government for Medicaid eligible students that we provide services to. The reason you see a seventy one dollar increase is because the state always changes the chapter seventy. Uh, the minimum contributions in the final budget and I can't change it on the town assessment, so I have to make an adjustment somewhere else. We made it in Medicaid last year by seventy one dollars. Net increase, two hundred and seventy thousand on local fund. District funds over the last year, you see it's about a nine percent growth rate, but it's really the last three years that we've been appropriating on E and D that's pushing it up there. Previous to that, it was pretty much, you know, slight growth over the last, FY twenty, FY twenty six. Total budget through the year is up two point nine nine percent. That's our budget. You can see, I mean, I don't need to get all these things. School choice is one of the revenue sources that we have. You can see that FY twenty five, our choice in numbers, these are number of students in, the red is number of students out. We will always have to pay for the students that go, choose to go to other districts. Um, we want to remain a choice district because we do bring that revenue in. Um, as far as the, the offset tuition versus reimbursement for FY twenty five, it's going to be seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. It might be a little bit more because that's based on what was on the cherry sheet. That's another source of funding that we're using to balance the budget for next year.
On the school choice, do you think the fields affect that?
The fields?
The fields that you're proposing and the fields that don't?
No.
I mean, are. Are people going to choose to go elsewhere because of?
Yes.
Do you think that that's?
Students leave before they get to high school. Sometimes for. We do know that some, those are sometimes some of the reasons why.
Is that payment to. Other schools going to keep going up? Because of field conditions?
Possibly.
And a lot of the, sometimes it might not be the choice. Students, because those are where it's public schools, sometimes we lose to private schools. You know, for that point of the question, when we see the spy, the opposite spiral is when, um. There's like a, a crisis or we're not offering, where we have to, at some point, like have a budget crisis, not the big. I'm not having one, but it's just yours, right? But you had, had to have major layoffs like ten years ago. We saw. That less, a lot less coming. That also. But for athletics, I think probably months ago, not from school choice out. I think more go to private schools out, which is.
You no longer get any hockey players. I'll, I'll tell you that right now. Hockey players absolutely want nothing to do with N Muck in general.
Alright, um, so school choice revolving, which is another source that we've increased for FY twenty six to keep the balance. These are the balance taking each fiscal year. So you can see we were up at almost two point four million. Again, the school choice revolving account is a separate. Account state requires us to keep it that way. We use it as an offset to salaries every year of approximately eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. Uh, for FY twenty six, we're going up to one point four million around, which is going to take some funds out of those reserves. This is part of the process for this year is using reserve funds to keep the budget balance. If you look at our D and D balance, you can see we were as high as not one point nine billion, uh, two years ago. So we are dropping in that area as well. Again, using reserve funds to keep the budget balance. Um, some of our federal grants, these are the ones we are concerned about. These are the special ed grants, um, and title brand problem. Uh, these are this year's allocation, seven hundred two thousand. We don't know, we won't get the allocation for next year until July or August, so it'll be long after the budget is sold.
Just to give you a sense of what you have the. Like two forty grand pays for a special ed, any like staff and special education that helps us and we'll talk about. We use more of that this year. The title one is, uh, we have title, a couple of title one schools that have higher students and low income. And so we use that to pay for tutors. Um, for that, when we talked about tier two intervention, that's what that is. Three, we didn't used to have title three, but it was new. I think this is like our second or third year of having it. And that's related to English language honors. So that's new. Title four, they introduced it about, let's say, five years ago. It's been ten thousand every single year and it's either for. Health and wellness or SEL, uh, social. And it's either for health and wellness or SEL, uh, social emotional learning or, uh, for innovation and we use it to pay usually for like a standard. Survey instrument that we have or like our assessment system, you know, so we just use it for that. That's never gone up for them. Uh, we do with, with like the news coming out of the federal government though, uh. All of those are managed by the Department of Education, I believe, and, uh, yeah, and. We do expect, there have been bills that have gone, haven't made it all the way through of like eliminating all those title, when they talk about like entitlement grants. These are all entitlement grants, um, so it's, there is the potential of reduction, nation, but we don't, we haven't heard yet.
But your, your balanced budget is using that seven hundred and two thousand to balance your current, your FY twenty five budget?
No, it's just that I've money from that. Get that, the rest, um, no.
It's reserved, yeah, I'll give it to you.
So it's too many pieces for like measuring and.
So I'm just looking at some, did the same, had the same issue in the subcommittee meeting. This is the current seven hundred and two thousand in grants for this current fiscal year.
So of that, all that money we expect to carry over probably around five hundred thousand dollars in the two forty.
I guess my question is, you find out in July about, if you get more, right?
For FY twenty six, right?
Right, and we're talking about the FY twenty six budget. So right now, if you were to get, if those grants, you don't get any grants in July, does that affect your FY twenty six balance budget?
Yes, it does.
That's, so that, that's, that's the risk that you're, okay.
Yes, yes, I mean, the title one.
Right.
Pays for tutors directly, you wouldn't have them. They, they know that based on like when we've had more and we've been able to bring in tutors and it's been reduced, we.
And you're hitting your reserves pretty hard for FY twenty six, so five hundred thousand dollar boe he popped up, that's an issue.
Very good. Next slide. But thanks. We expect to carry over right now about five hundred and thirteen thousand, that's sort of where it's at, but that's as of today and things could change between today and the end of the year. I'm estimating five hundred thousand, this year it was five seventy seven, so I think five hundred is being conservative, but yes, if they cut it, that could have an impact on us. But the salaries that we're applying in FY twenty six to that sum is almost the same as what we're anticipating between the two grants, so you're absolutely right. If the federal government says we're not funding two forty anymore for five hundred thousand dollars.
And fiscal twenty four was the number of like half a million dollars on these guys?
No, it's five eight something, it's been coming down the last couple of years. We average around five fifty to five seventy.
But I mean, the amount of salaries that you charge to.
Yes, in this current year, it's about six hundred and thirty thousand.
So your increase in your.
Yeah.
Your location bracket, and so that means.
It was not gonna carry over, it got, what happened for us is during the pandemic, we couldn't hire people, we had all kinds of grants coming out. So we ended up getting a year ahead on some of these grants, including that two forty grant. We're gonna catch up.
I mean, these, these federal grants allow, well, there's ways that essentially nothing that we do allows. They'll, they'll be.
Use this as a standard.
That five thirteen, they'll spend that down first and they'll get into whatever the twenty six allocation is and that's just. Federal grants like, yeah, we save grants, don't, eight year mark for the, um, rectory study at the library, we signed that contract in November or December and we have to spend that money by the rectory.
It's relatively new for federal grants that you can carry them over like you can now, it's probably about six years, they started saying we'll let you make a two year, then it became a two and a half to a three year. So it's a relatively new thing, but we did get ahead. I mean, as much as the pandemic had a lot of negative impacts financially, it helped the school district out quite a bit.
Okay, a quick question, so given the environment and the, and the, uh, the. This federal funding is sort of an unknown for FY twenty six, is there any discussion at the state level that you're aware of to possibly stopgap or address? Because I mean, they've already canceled the food, some of the food program funding, right? So I don't know if our state, if it's, I haven't seen anything at the Massachusetts level, if Massachusetts even.
What I did hear today, again, I don't know how accurate this is, has had to do with the elimination of the department that. The funding for some of these specific grants would remain in place. I don't know, will they make sure to send the money to the state, but there's.
They don't worry about the operational impact, they just say, oh, this can block grants, block, but we don't think we're sending.
See the title grants come away only because they talk about that at every year, so it's come up and it's been. You know, from the sense before when I was assistant superintendent managing them, like, going down, going down, going down over all of the years. Uh, so that's what I would anticipate, I wouldn't anticipate the two forty to be eliminated, I mean, you know, about five. Just in the future, but it's, but even in a non-eliminated scenario, say everything goes, you have a million dollars for twenty six.
This is going to be, you're only gonna be able to carry over twenty thousand dollars.
Very nice, yeah, yeah, very nice. It is the way we used to be, we used to spend the entire two forty grant and just, you know, it's just like there. But, um, but, yeah. You left me with my profit. Alright, so how to be balanced all this stuff, um, we'll just jump over here. So first of all, let's look at the school district's budget. On FY sixteen, FY twenty six, our growth rate has been about two point six percent. So it has not been enormous, there were a couple of dips, uh, they don't show in here. But there were a couple of reductions based on debt service coming off, uh, this is just the operational side of it. In order to balance the budget, we are using reserve, well, that's the only way to do it. Um, and keep the district at what we call that level service budget and not hit the town's traditional money. The reason for that is because we have capital projects coming and we don't ask for so much at one time. So we, we've used E and D, we use school choice, we're using the grant money, um, we're using revolving accounts. We're reducing requests to the best we can, we're looking at positions as they go through and trying to, you know, see if we can reallocate resources in various ways. We're looking at our fees for facility use, we're advocating the state, we're doing lots of different things. But the bottom line is that we're dipping into our reserves to get through the year. Quite honestly, you know, we built them up fairly healthily over the last several years. That's the purpose of it, is to keep you, you know, solid and then you don't have to rent the stores. These are the specifics of what we did for this year in order to make things work, um.
Uh, we, yeah, we originally had five positions that we had identified. You know, so I had the three on the bottom and then there were two in the next, maybe something needs and it's reduced now to that rate.
This is the basic balancing act, but again, you know, we're doing this for FY twenty six, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it for FY twenty seven unless something strange happens next year. Uh, these are the various positions that we talked about in the offsets, there's still things that we don't know, for example. The governor's budget, the state budget could increase revenue to us, we'll probably find that out in mid-July. Um, I believe the, uh, House will do its budget in April, typically the Senate does it in May or early June. The governor is supposed to buy, sign the budget by July one, I don't think the governor has ever signed, not this governor, any governor has ever signed a budget before like July ten, I think last year it was August.
I think it's something like ten straight years over the last state relative to our fiscal year, start to adopt a budget.
You know, so it's really tough when you have to certify a budget and send it to the towns for their assessments in March and you really don't know what your budget's gonna be until August. But that's the way to work, you know, that's the way the game works right now. So we're hoping for some offsets there that will help us, maybe if we get some additional state aid, we don't have to dip into our reserves as far as, could help us for FY twenty seven. The implications going on is that we're dipping into these things and we're not gonna be able to continue to do that. We've also. I'm gonna go on to the next slide, we're doing something that we're calling the snowplow effect. But in essence, there's things that we really, as a district feel we need to do and we're pushing them off. Uh, one of them is.
Year after year, so it's accumulating over the years for some of these.
I mean, I remember sitting here last year telling everybody that we needed additional tax support, that we really don't have enough staff and there are situations where something breaks down and it might be. A couple of days before it gets fixed because we don't have the staff. We're still not putting that position in the budget for, uh, FY twenty six. Um, there's other teachers that we could use, the iPads that we're using for the one, one purple banner. We built in two hundred thousand a couple of years ago and it started recurring expense for those devices, we had not been able to add the second two hundred thousand dollars in. Doing it for this year as well, we can escape one more year, but it's gonna have to go in for FY twenty seven. A lot of our projectors and smart boards we're putting when the buildings were built. Most of them barely can be seen anymore, so we're working with the town of Upton that has a grant specific for the schools to try and purchase some of those now. But as Maureen talked about, you know, things like busing for field trips or if a bunch of students go on a field trip to wherever it is. The cost of the buses might be two thousand dollars for that one trip. We'd love to be able to fund that within the budget, um, there's lots of things that we're just sort of pushing down the road for a year. Again, part of that is because we're not, you know, trying to live with the internet stream that we have for FY twenty six.
We have, I mean, there are things that we have done and we talked about in the past months, it'd be all like. Well, was, you know, this is a bad slide, right? Yeah, but you know, when you talk about, we have two bands now and we didn't have bands and we use some of the, uh, grant funding. And those bands have allowed in between like for smaller groups and we can actually, yeah, bring smaller groups and teams to different places and that's helped. And it's also saved us money for them, you know, we don't need to get that much. So we're, we're trying to do these little things or we look for the grant funding to help with some of the. One-time, you know, costs that we can do that, projectors, that's, it, as I keep saying, looking to see what we can do now. But it's not meaning all of any, so keep coming into the budget over the years.
Talking about the thing, so a lot of our students at the high school that, you know, especially, um, special ed students go out on vocational things on a daily basis. We're paying three hundred dollars a day for a bus to take them, we know that the band, band was paid for through S R grants. So it was one-time money, but it's allowed us to save some money, some of our athletes, we're not, we're having difficulty getting buses for after-school athletes. It is not us, every district, that, that they can't find drivers, they just can't do it. We now can send a team with the two vans we have and they can go out and get to these games so that we don't have to pay those costs. So all of that has helped. But that's sort of where we're at this, um. Variables, what we still have is variable state funding. I'm a district, I'm only gonna reference this quickly, we just, you know, I'll give you an example, today we learned that we had a family. That moved into Medden, I believe, um, from another town, students in an out-of-district placement, it's a collaborative school. Collaborative schools typically run around seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year in tuition, we owe that tuition tomorrow. We don't, like this, as soon as they move into town, we have to cover that tuition, it wasn't in our budget, we had no idea. That's the kind of things we deal with without additional tuitions. School choice hasn't settled, the enrollment for kindergarten hasn't settled and we do get influx of people that move into town. Every year.
The, the, they're not like the April first moving day?
That's for private students only, not for public, for classes. I actually went down to the state house and tried to get that law changed in the hearing. As a matter of fact, with your friend I was with and it went nowhere. And my, my goal was to change the date because the move-in date is April first, so our private school, if somebody moves into Medden before April first, we owe the tuition starting July one. They move in after April one, we have a year break before we have to give the tuition, which gives us a chance to budget-wise. I tried to get the state to change it to February one, so it would be ahead of your budget time and then in addition, include everything, but it went out. It was, uh, rainstorm, we got there and everything. Alright, um, so this is, uh, what we call the fiscal cliff that everybody talks about. These are the things that we're looking at that, you know, kind of have to be dealt with in the next year, but we are approaching a point where we've been able to manage ourselves, you know. If you remember back when the override happened, it was two thousand and fifteen, it was for the FY sixteen budget. We used to always say that every five years you needed influx of additional money just because the state aid isn't there. We've gone to that and then it'll be twelve. But eventually, there's gonna be a need for an influx of additional funding. And with that, we're gonna go on to the capital stuff quickly and I'm sure that's what you guys all have questions about, because I think the level funded budget is probably pretty huge in the town. I don't know that I'm going, I think. We get our capital leads in three basic categories, aging facilities, and I know that sounds strange, but Nipmuck is twenty eight years old. Things need to be upgraded based on the fact that it's just getting old. Um, Clough Memorial are twenty years old and Nisco, as you all know, is about, uh, sixty five years. Uh, we look at safety and security and we look at student learning, those are the three things that we're trying to impact of capital project. The Nipmuck roof, we've been accepted in the MSBA program.
Just, I guess, in a, or. I don't know if we need to go through this just for purposes, but I believe we were all present at the multi-board meeting.
Okay, so you.
Like, well, so I guess I'm gonna throw the question out there, if we were all present for the multi-board meeting. I don't know how much detail you want to go into, other than do we need it for the record or anything, but.
I was not, but I watched it.
Okay.
You suppose they have something, yeah, the reason why, it's just, okay, quickly and not once, yeah, you'd really need this version.
Yeah, yeah. Short, short version.
NSBA program, roof of Nipmuck is twenty eight years old, it leaks everywhere we replace it, it's mostly asphalt shingle, the other expense that will be reimbursed. From NSBA is all the HVAC units on the roof are also twenty eight year old, years old, they have to be removed to replace the roof. You don't put twenty eight year old, you can't get parts for a backup roof, you gotta replace it, we're looking to hopefully to do heat pumps of some kind. It's only for air conditioning and air exchange. Within the building, we're looking at a variety of things, uh, as Al will talk about, one of them is the building management systems, uh. They don't work at all for schools, we wanted Nipmuck, again, was installed in nineteen ninety six, you can't get parts for it, so when anything breaks on it, we can't maintain it anymore, it's just not available. We need a generator at Nisco, it would benefit a lot of things, but the main thing there you have to remember is when the gen, uh, when the power goes out, which seems to happen quite frequently now, there's no water at Nisco. Which means there's no bathrooms at Nisco and it's, so I don't wanna go into more details than that. The paging systems at Nisco, for example, in the other schools, barely work, paging system was what was installed when we built the school in nineteen fifty eight. So it's cups and strings. Some of the curves are crumbling, it's some of the, mostly at Clough Memorial, the concrete curves, the plows hit them when they plow in winter, um, they're just crumbling apart. So there's a variety of things inside the buildings that we need to deal with and these are just things that over time get aged out and need to be upgraded. And then we're looking at the athletic fields, that's the third piece and there's a lot more involved, I know everybody wants to talk about the football field at the high school and that's one piece of this project. But there's also other athletic fields that, you know, for example, the baseball, softball, practice field at Nipmuck has an irrigation system that was installed in nineteen ninety six. For reasons I don't know, it is eighteen inches underground, so when you have to fix something, you have to like pull yourself into a hole. It no longer works, it needs to be replaced, we did replace the well. Softball field needs to be reoriented so that you have, left field is more than seventy five feet. Um, the fields at Nisco are hardest, it's played on those fields, you know, it's like playing on concrete, so there's some work that needs to be done on all the fields to sort of upgrade them and get them back into decent shape. And that's most of us, that's, a lot of us is a safety issue.
Jay, when you're talking about the softball fields and you say, you, you, you quickly say it's gonna be reoriented, that's, that's not maintenance. That you're re-architecting and rebuilding the whole field.
Yes.
So I want, I want to be really clear with that because when I see the CPC questions and it can't be used for maintenance, that's not maintenance, that is, okay.
CPC money, my understanding is it can be used to upgrade the quality of the field, so.
And it's the word, when I see the word maintenance thrown around.
It's not cutting the grass.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that that's, that's significant, as you kind of said, reorienting, I'm like, well.
You know, one of the expectations of doing that is gonna be moving the backstop or putting backstop in and probably new dugouts. If that were reimbursable through CPA, that's not a big deal.
Right, I just want, when we get into the details, based on that email. Making sure you're using the right verbiage.
Okay, and that's it, initial costs, I kind of put them together, but in total, all of it is about thirty million. Broken out this way, it will be three separate votes now at the town meetings. The MSBA, the roof project, we've got a couple of things we still have to work out as far as timing. And that's enough here.
Um, so the one question that I come away from the multi-board meeting that I never ended up asking is when we talked about, uh, average impact to, uh, people's taxes. There was only a single number, um, how are we splitting, is there, is there a split of that single number between Menden and Upton that's different or is it fifty fifty?
Well, I think that Upton, Menden's. Yeah, but the way this would happen, if you don't, this would still be one bar, let's say all three projects are a group, it's one of that hypothesis, right? We would then be, we're the ones that are borrowing the money, we would borrow the money, we do that after the project is done, we do one or two years worth, I think you can do what was called bond anticipation notes, which are one-year interest-only loans. That gives you your revenue to pay your bills. The roof project is gonna be reimbursed at fifty two percent, but when we get it authorized at the town, you have to authorize a hundred percent of the cost, even though you're only gonna. Even though you're only going to pay forty eight percent. When it comes time to splitting up the assessments on the debt, we're going to have to come up with a fairly complicated formula. Our regional agreement says that debt services is assessed based on each town's involvement in the building that the debt applies to. So for example, the athletic complex, this Misco to Nipok is going to be the enrollment at Misco, the enrollment at Nipok, then it gets split out. The other stuff is going to be based on the buildings and it's going to be a fairly complicated formula, to be honest, to figure it out, but yes. Will get split out. Let's say, um, part of the project is at Clough. We're doing some work at Clough. The cost for that would be split between Mendon and Upton based on each town's involvement at Clough. So right now, there's very, I don't think there's any of the kids at Clough, there are Mendon kids at Memorial, so Memorial. Part of that cost will be picked up by Mendon and it changes every single year. So I'm going to have to do three tables now, one for each project because there are three separate votes and then this is the cumulative, it's total. But it's basically, that's what it would be for next year, the first year that we actually assess that. It could change in years two or three, but it's not going to be.
Yeah, wild swings, right, but yeah, I think.
If it's five hundred dollars a year, let's say that's what the debt tax impact was, it's not going to go from five hundred to twelve hundred the next year. Five, ten, we could go to four ninety. You know, or like we talked about the senior center, you know, we save ourselves twenty dollars a year. That's basically the variance as you're going to see.
Yeah, and I think those details will be important for people to hear and digest, so. Writing warrant articles and doing our preamble before.
Yeah, so generally, it's on all the three warrant articles, ballot votes, motions. Uh, I know we need to hear the numbers for the. Basically for the motions for the town meeting, you don't have to put a number on the warrant, it just tells you that you're going to vote on it. You don't put a number on the ballot vote because you're just authorizing, the town would see two and a half to do letty. I know there's talk about using CPA funds, I believe that that would be on an annual basis. Okay, our debt service is. Five hundred thousand dollars and we can apply a hundred thousand dollars of CPA that applies to that part of the project that it's applicable to. So we can reduce our debt service and that reduce the tax.
We're going to need to know that number so the CPC can vote on it to perform town meeting.
Yeah, we, we have revised numbers for everything except the roof. Uh, the issue we're having with the roof is that the MSBA project. Requires us to have the designer and O P Ms assigned to us by MSBA. They just gave those names to us last week. We've been in touch with them since then, but it's pretty hard to go to an architect or a design team and say, okay, great. You're now our designer. Can you give us schematic designs and process and it's not even six gates? It's really difficult to do. So we kind of have a couple of options that we're still trying to work through and once we figure out what we're going to do, we'll kind of talk back, talk to you guys about it. We'll vote for chairman.
Maybe we need to vote on the front, but you'll see on the warrant that we, that we have for ATM now. We vote each year on CPCs, you know, vote to allow debt service. So the police station has a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in debt service, um, that, that's. So even if we don't know the number right now for CPC, CPC vote each individual year, we'll have this break down, so we'll have CPC vote every year.
I would, yes, CPC will want to know what the total amount of the. What are the, what are the expense line items to be funded by CPC, not the annual amount? Because just to go forward and be able to say, we think we can CP, we're going to allocate CPC funds to this project. CPC is going to say, we haven't voted on that yet. So we do need a number. Just, I know the people on the committee and they will want the specifics.
We say number of total cost or?
Yeah, if you look at the field, right, that's where we're focused.
About ten million seven is CPC.
Eligible. And then a portion of that, that would, I'd bring to CPC to say, this is the total cost. Think fifty fifty just to start, so are we willing to, you know, they're going to borrow three and a half that we would then fund annually. Yeah.
Right, so then we can then take that number.
Three, three and a half million, I think we could get a vote on that. Then you can get into the details.
It's seven million, four percent, twenty years, level debt service is five hundred and twenty three thousand, so that's what that happens.
Right, and I, the spreadsheet I've set up, you can put in a number of like this is how much we have to get annually. And calculate what your tax assessment is based on that.
To me, the biggest question, which, which pieces of the project are CPC eligible?
And that's something that. We're still trying to sort that out. I don't, I'm not as familiar with it. I asked my son because I think he is familiar with it. He says.
Should we sit down and bring people to the table and say? Well, I was thinking get Upton and Mendon and yourselves together to go to the project.
But you gotta remember, each town, let's say Upton says, you know what, we don't want it.
Just, just to get a agreement on what would be eligible, then we would take that back. That way you've got the CPA folks like Ann probably saying, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that piece is in, that piece can't be done.
Yeah, so one day, I mean, it's, this is new for me to be able to say the CPC department. When I was doing research on the site and I was trying to hook up like school projects and different field projects, just to see what was used for it. You know, read through what they say you could apply to, but, um, it, it, they were talking, there were a lot of baseball softball fields. There was some accessibility, which is part of what we have. There was even some with like concession press box, I saw a lot of them. Uh, we know it can't go for the turf. You know, I think anyone who knows a lot more on CPC or.
I actually, Dan's probably a good source, I didn't know if you wanted that. I, I would bring Ann to the table too, because when we get together as a committee, she'll probably be the, sort of the deciding person.
Maureen had a few messages coming, I saw them and.
I said that I'd be willing to, um, to a meeting, we just have to enter the schedule of means. The, uh, I think also just that, you know, we have the walking path. So that we were clearly that's recreation, that's our community, um, you know, so that I think there's a number of elements that will fit. And, and they are broken down, we do have the cost range.
Thanks for the question, you can see those charfields. We talked about it here when we were at the meeting. And I think it was better way to know this, that someone had mentioned that Duncan Dole had said. Now the entire field, basically, is not, does that, has anything been investigated?
Well, it's hard for them to go and try to solicit donation, you know, that project.
So once it's approved, then we're go, then there's the plan, but they, you know, will give us money, so that is part of the plan. Pull back here from M C P, um, to do that and see what we can, what we can get. But there are some, um, I think Bill was saying that. Shepherd Hill or something like you know, bank one, eight million or something.
When you go to town meeting, you still have to have this whole amount of proof.
Yeah, that's whatever.
It is, yeah.
So, so basically what would happen is if this passed, it could be a lot less than possible.
Well, yeah, because you know what, like I said, we do these one year notes for a couple of years to get through the project, but it goes out to bid. But the last projects we've done, the actual cost was much less than what we actually got approved at the town meeting. Because it's gaining less and ultimately you only want to borrow what you actually have to spend. You don't want to like go out borrowing at the front and then run out of money or have too much of the money sitting in the bank and pay interest on it and taxes.
Fortunately, unfortunately, depending on how the project goes, they're not aligned on your tax bill that says this is for this debt. It's all kind of mixed together, so it's tough to look back after you do the cleanup now or you do your final borrowing to say. We're actually a million dollars under the average and to the fact that there was twenty seven dollars less or whatever, that you can't like tease that out by looking at your own tax.
You know, you know, as I was saying, when you, the town meeting votes to authorize us to borrow money. The out vote authorized the town to exceed pro two and a half in order to pay the assessment on an annual basis. So it's kind of, you know, you're approving it, but we don't know the actual profit when it's done.
Yeah, nothing stops five years from now finding, Steven Tyler gets nostalgic and decides to cover it. Yeah, that's, I love when that one gets brought. Someone call Everett Smith.
If industry rates double, then, you know, that also impacts the other one. That's why I said, unfortunately, maybe you can't see the individual.
Actually, he's new to times. You know, seeing Steven Tyler, his, his first concert was at Misco. Yeah, so there's a picture of, yeah, I think.
My wife grew up in the Joe, Joe Perry's house. I am less still living there.
Any other questions?
Anything else pertinent?
With the motions for the numbers, so both, so these are costs for the whole project, which, which both towns have to vote on.
Yes.
Do both towns have to vote on the total amount?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the, the motion would involve these.
Let's say this.
These numbers.
Let's say this was the number.
With the explanation that actually Mendon isn't responsible for that whole number, it's for the.
Correct, so that's why you kind of at the same time say that this is what we estimate the tax impact is going to be for Mendon's share of this cost.
Like where that education, public education component is getting huge because if you come to the floor and we say, why? You know.
Well, there's new people in town, but the town has done this in the past. We did a, um, accelerated repair for with MSBA and Misco. Like eleven, twelve years ago to do roof boilers. We built Clough Memorial, we built Nipok and all those things, it was the exact same process. Uh, I actually probably do have some overhead projector spots from the other school. So if anybody has a flashlight, we can hold it.
And Maureen said, you know, athletic field, so, if facility needs comes up and the, and what we can is for twelve million dollars in authorization. But if there's, because there is a Mendon, two and twelve million dollars that essentially constitutes a failure of that question.
If, if both towns amended it to the same amount, then I think it would be cast, but it not. That was one of the reasons that splitting it is probably a good idea because let's say the facility and athletics was together. Came to a town meeting, one town said, you know what, I want to pull out the facility and I just want to do athletic fields. And the town approves that abandoned motion, but the other town approves the whole thing, the whole thing is just failed. So, you know, ultimately you do need both towns to support it at both. I think that story is going to.
Yeah, I've been reaching out to local youth groups to get, and I'm being asked for information and I went looking for at least, did I ask? Did I send you an email asking for the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
I sent it to you, I think.
No.
Yeah, it's good. So you're not, nobody's giving me emails anymore. Congratulations.
No. It's not, I went to go look for it. I was, I was asking Eric. Oh, okay, alright. Yeah. I, I texted Eric, I'm like, where can I find it? It's up there, it's up there. I mean, I'll have to look if my, you know, delete everything or not. Okay. Yeah, no, I want the full breadth of, of everything.
Just this week, so we've been in touch with, you know, O P M and designer and MSBA and. We have revised numbers.
Yep.
It's now split, so we, we need to put together just a different organization. But for example, there was a, a memorial P T O meeting tonight. I couldn't go present at that because I was here. So I condensed a bit, sent it to, you know, money bill to be able to share. So we're, we're going to be going to meetings, but if you have meetings or locations that you recommend, we're creating a list. We're going to do that. We'll probably, I'll probably do like a, a video just explaining once we have that presentation. And have a press release that goes out to papers that just gives a general overview. And then, I know I have the capital planning website organized, but that. We're going to have a portion right off the meeting page that I need to create with like maybe a week. To start building out, you know, we have F and Qs already drafted. So we're trying, we had to get through this part of the budget, um, Monday to today and then. Kind of switching gears right now. So within the week.
Yeah, I said the multi board meeting, I'll say it again, I do think that there needs to be a boots on the ground, like we need to recruit. I know that the school can only go so far in terms of trying to, you know, recommend things, right, so. Yeah, right, so, uh, in the essence of sharing the facts, uh, let's get it all out there. Uh, I do think that there needs to be like an army of people getting out there to practices and to. Uh, individual meetings, like we need volunteers to do that. And my lessons learned from the senior community center is, uh, you know. The digital method of communication only goes so far, no matter how far you think it goes. Uh, and there's way too many options for miscommunication, misunderstanding. Uh, and even the, you know, having that, there was the meeting in the video that was done at the senior center, like that was great. I don't think that reached as many people as we thought that it should have. Yeah, so I think, yeah, boots, boots on the ground is going to be critical, otherwise. I fear it's successful. Yeah.
Another question. This is not a pessimistic question. The unlikely event, let's say that the roof project in house, because there are going to be some people that are going to say, I don't want to be in that. What, I, I did, I would like to know what's going to, in other words. Right, because what, in other words, I gotta believe that it's not going to cost just that amount a year from it.
No.
It's going to cost a lot. With the possibility of, I think I agree.
Be the part rubber or you can make your asphalt shingles.
I mean, there's just so many tops you could put there, right?
Well, we have like.
And something just to point out on it too, like with, you know, it's a great benefit that we got into the celebrating repair for MSBA. They used to do it every year, that they're doing it every two years now. So we have to wait another two or three years or two again. And then also the Clough and Memorial are. In the next round at some point for, they, they're almost at the point where they'd be able to, we can put in for that. Which will be years off, it's not like it's next year, but, I mean, it, for, so you know, we're in the middle of the. Main office and it's got buckets, I walk in in the back door and, you know, and it's, it's leaking and I'm just going to say, hey, I'm going to get the ozone back to put in. And to have the water, you can see these visible parts, but then think about safety wise, like all the. Parts that, you know, where water just kind of goes anywhere. So we've had electrical and some other issues that have popped out. Because we're pretty certain that the water's coming down to areas as well, but, yeah, we have this whole thing.
I mean, Milford Schools was just in the news for, so, I mean, it wasn't as bad as.
Not everybody has the intricate H V A Cs instead of big public school pass as opposed to like your house. So it's a little bit more complex, but the roof, everybody has, everybody gets after thirty years, the roof probably needs to be replaced. Mostly it is asphalt chain. There's only a small section that's the flat roof.
The number for the roof, that's going to be the question, like how can a roof cost eight million dollars? So we're going to like. People are going to ask that.
Yeah.
How do you get to eight million on a roof?
They, they sit on square footage, just like if somebody comes to your house and you have to quote to do your house. The only thing I can give as an example, so I did mine, my house, probably fourteen years ago and it was like eighty five hundred. I'm guessing if I went and did it today, it would be twenty five thousand.
It's going to be a question, how do you get to eight million on a roof? I know, well, and that's what I'm saying, we have to explain how you get to eight million dollars on a roof, I'm telling you. Right, so the question's going to be asked.
Yeah.
Right, so the average, the average square foot of your home, right, your average square foot of your roof and what it would approximately cost.
I knew the answer. What I'm saying is.
No, yeah.
The question is going to be asked many times, how do you get to eight million dollars?
Like what is the size of the school relative to like a standard house? Like how many times of a like house.
Yeah, we have, we have the square footage.
But I mean, but square footage, but like people might need to know how many houses worth the roof is basically.
It's not just, it's not just the roof, there's a flat roof, there's the big gable roof. There is all the equipment. If we can say, here's the bid, here's the breakdown, that's what we need.
I think your, your, your point is going and as much detail about the nuances of the roof as I'm sure we will go into for the nuances.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly.
We will talk about.
It's almost as much as the field, so explain it.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so.
I believe the HVAC is a huge portion of the time.
It's a, and that's not reimbursable.
So the HVAC is in the other.
No, HVAC, these are the units that are.
But I mean, still in that request, okay, because it's just not reimbursable.
Okay, so is, what's the number of those over eight million for? Okay, so if you say fifty percent, fifty-two percent from MSBA, we're not going to get over four million dollars. It's a bunch of that.
Yeah, but what is that? No.
We have the breakdowns, we'll have.
Right.
That's part of the difficulty with that particular phase of the project is that, again, we just got assigned a design team that's supposed to finish that stuff together.
Yeah.
A week ago.
Yeah.
There's a couple of ways to approach it.
If I wasn't sitting in these meetings, I'd be asking that question in May.
So the meeting is on May fourteenth.
Yeah.
And it's enough.
Or or the fact that the town meeting is on.
Yeah, May second, Friday, May second, I know.
Just, I mean, I feel like we can't just leave that hanging there.
Yeah, that's okay.
Somebody tuning into the recording.
I know, but I'm still. Well, I hear the same.
I I read something today that said why your town Facebook should not be.
Yeah, that's it. I haven't heard that last year, that's why I'm not.
I guess I have a question for us, what is our, uh, the, what is the timeline for the ballot? I know you will need to send the ballot question to.
You are, the language is generally already against the language.
Okay, so so that's, that's what you need to ask.
Right, the only place you need the number is for.
Oh, oh, I, I know, that's, that's not my, my. Yes, because when, when are we getting this?
He's got it.
Yeah, and what's, what's our deadline for the ballot?
This one just looking up for help. Um, I think forty-five days, so I'm.
I understand.
Yes, I think April, I think.
Then I know the language is, it's like, we've experienced that.
Thirty-five days, so April.
Right, but the all that language that Jeremy has, that they have or nothing as well, wins by our own council. The MSBA part didn't, it's be approved by MSBA and they have approved it. So, for example, if you said, let's give a number, and I was like, said, I don't like this, I don't want to say this, and go back to MSBA to get that approved or it's not valid. So hopefully, you know, I, I'm pretty sure, you know, by council usually they know what they're doing.
Right.
That's who I would go with, um, the town meeting vote is a majority vote, the ballot vote is majority vote, is what it wants to do in the bar, or like, if the town was bar, it would be a two-thirds.
I got one more question about the. It's not cost, it's the M word.
Yeah.
When there's a lot of water inside a building.
Oh, yeah, both.
Yes. I don't like saying the word, so thank you for saying.
We do it for all that on a regular basis, so we don't have that issue now. But eventually, yes, if the roof continues to leak, you do begin to have problems like that.
No, I just didn't know if there was this study, or do you think that?
We do a quality testing, what they go.
You do.
Measure, but, you know, quality testing, what they really do is measure the humidity level inside the room and then outside, and make sure that it's comparable, so, um. You know, I.
There's. Other stuff, yeah.
I mean, eventually, if we don't replace the roof, yeah, you're gonna have a problem at school, I mean, there's no doubt.
Especially in the summer, obviously.
Yeah.
So another, there's something important for this.
Well, plus that's part of the HVAC stuff, especially the air conditioning stuff, because with the AC, we had an issue with the auditorium where the AC didn't work for a whole summer.
Yeah.
That's exactly what we ended up having to deal with. So you need air exchange, you need things to remove moisture from the air, but that's all part of, you know, the programs. And these systems are really complex, and that's part of the energy dynamic systems that we need to replace, that they control the air exchange, which I believe is like three times an hour or something like that. Where they bring in outside air, heat it, all the controls that do that. Again, we have a system that just doesn't work anymore at any school, really. You know, the one, the clock one is in this project.
Works.
It works, man, yeah, and it doesn't work. Yeah, we do have, yeah. The one at Clough is what Isabella was talking about, it is part of this project, but if it turned out that we got a grid community grant and cover a portion of that, that would also reduce costs. But again, when we vote, we're gonna have to vote on what the whole cost is going to, we're gonna have, I think the deadline for the grid community grant is after our elections. So it would just reduce the cost down the road, but it's a plus if we can do that.
But we want to itemize all the external funding that you're pursuing, even if it's not guaranteed, right?
I'll say.
Any bombs you wanna throw?
Come on, get it, get it. We're here to make a few.
Uh, online, Jack, um, Billy. Anything else, anything from you guys?
Good here, thank you.
Good here, Keith.
I know on our side Jeremy's collected some written questions that we've had more technical, technical details, um. They've been said, is that what you said?
It was bad, you were apparently someone else, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Yeah.
Would there be appetite here for us to take a vote to recommend us draft a letter to our representatives for chapter seventy? Very much so, in support.
So moved.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
So maybe I, maybe I.
See, right now, I think for a motion, so like. I don't know, I don't know, Katie, can we hear that, there was a, there was a motion for us to draft a. Uh, letter to our representative. Motion for Mike, second for Brandon. Discussion.
So, yeah, the intent of this motion is to allow, uh, our representative from county to the chair to draft the letter in support of. Increase, uh.
Advocating.
Yeah, advocating that our representatives advocate to raise the chapter seventy. In the adopted budget.
I think chapter seventy, just the other first move, yeah, permanent allocation and regional. Okay.
Uh, so both of those, were they chapter, like, I mean, they said either or would be.
Let's go for both.
Yeah, go for both.
Okay, so both, yeah, so both, yeah.
The promise for transportation was a hundred percent, they're not keeping their promise, right? And the chapter seventy calculations are. Well, yeah. Right, be- because they, they take nothing into account about, yeah, about actual revenues to the town and where they come from.
I mean, I would, I would lean towards, uh, in, uh, regional transportation for that very reason. Like, listen, you, you regionalize at a hundred percent.
Yeah.
You're not meeting your commitment.
Right, yeah, so there's holding the government accountable.
Right.
Um, and then there's the, you guys have no idea how this actually works and you're just posing us.
And if you focus on chapter seventy. The idea was that the state.
In exchange for this, we, yeah.
We were fully funded education, and the local share has kept creeping up year after year after year in ways that top two and a half hasn't changed. So we're constrained on revenues and data increases in our expenditures. Uh, so.
But I mean, the.
But that's four years sales.
But, and the answer would be, well, you have the opportunity to run over it for two and a half, don't let two and a half be a constraint, town amended, that's what they would tell us. But I hear you.
I guess the, the, the other, so the other part for me is the fact that, uh, many other towns have a way easier ability to bring in other sources of revenue other than just dipping into the pockets of the people who live here, right? So that takes, none of that is taken into account into the calculation, like a business versus residential revenue stream. Like, there should be some kicker, I don't know, in, in that calculation.
So we have a motion on the floor and second, so I guess. Any other discussion? I guess, well, let's, let's bring it to a vote, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, right, great, so we will, we will, um, draft the letter. All right, sorry, keep moving if you want, I just didn't want to lose the motion.
Yeah, no, um, no, that's it. Uh, is there any reason for Pinkham to do the same?
I don't know.
Join us with a side.
We can, we can. Alright, can I get a motion to, uh, support the action just taken by select board and join that letter?
So moved, Jesse Curl, so moved.
Run some later second.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor, Mike, Craig, or I?
Jesse Curl, aye.
You see, I agree. For on C I.
Jack Hodgins, aye.
Billy had a, aye.
Great.
My suspicion would be to draft a letter, share with boards in that, just side.
Yes.
Thank you. Great, if you have, Brendan.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so, um. Except we have annual town meeting warrant draft for review. And I'm wondering, to what extent?
There's any changes?
Well, so, so it closes tomorrow.
Um, so the general bylaw review committee was hoping to meet tonight or yesterday when I discussed the meeting once and they didn't. So they have some proposed bylaw changes, the nature of which has yet to be shared with me. Um, so I have sent this event, have sent you, um, places, placeholders for three separate bylaw changes for general bylaw review committee. Um, I said bye tomorrow, I need to at least know the nature of that, what that is for them, but, um, those have been added since we spoke last time. Um, and there have been one, two, three, five CPC and one land use committee. A lot of these are things we do every year for CPC.
So, I'm sorry, the drafts that we have includes.
Does include the, um, the general bylaw review committee I was just talking about, it includes all the CPC and land use committee.
Okay, great.
I believe since last time, the planning, um, the flood hazard overlay district, um, I'm getting some language to be, at least, you have to give sufficient notice in your, in your warrant. I can't just say to amend section five point zero, but you need to say what's one, um, so it's to, um, uh, apply with the national flooding check, comply with the national flooding check program. Um, and then, this is up for debate, of course, um, but the revolving fund expenditure elements, um, so parks was one sixty-five. I have, I place order here is two forty-five, based upon what we, um, talked about the other night, but that's up for debate before this gets, um, before this gets finalized. Based upon, well, we talked about how it doesn't, what I'm saying that now isn't necessarily be future, future years from. Um, and there's also, um, the con, since Isabella technically said, um, since this has been sent out a placeholder for, um, bylaw review from CONCOM including their.
I think there'd be one or two capital, probably, at least the, uh. Fire station doors.
Yep, so that, sorry, that was one, so, um, the cap, the capital working group went through and prioritized, um, all sorts of, every ask that we kind of have. And there were three new firewalls, um, and fire doors were our most important, and the fire chief asked for all three to be funded for free cash. I seem to prioritize, and he also prioritized them, same with me, so I thought, thought we had a process, since too. Um, and that's kind of a safety, security issue, so I'll place some more placeholders on here for free cash, and we'll discuss, uh, maybe on Tuesday as we wrap up the budget piece of it. We can wrap free cash piece of it, and I'll bring a short presentation on free cash, and so suggest the uses for it. Uh, but I think the fire doors, if, if, at sixty thousand dollars.
So when we were talking about, speaking of fire department, we were talking about the way to fund the goals for, for FTEs, right? You brought up the topic of operational override in order to support it as a full swing. If we were to do that this fiscal year, that would need to be part of the warrant, right? So that decision would need to be made in time for that, so we do need to put, put a placeholder in there, or are we assuming that that's sort of off the table for this fiscal year?
Yeah, should we put a placeholder so we can take things off, right, so?
Yeah.
I was only made the assumptions, this was off the table. Uh, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, I would leave a placeholder there, because I think on Tuesday, one of the discussion points, we. Yeah, it's something we're gonna see sort of this budget, and they're gonna have these asks, right?
Yep.
And part of that exercise is gonna be saying, which is, which of any of the asks, primarily around people, do we pursue, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of FTEs that are being.
Right, or, or hours, however they put it in there. So the question would be, do we take a swing on it? And do it all, because we think that's where we need to be, or do we not do it, or, so maybe a placeholder makes sense, so we have that flexibility for a discussion.
Yeah, I think put the placeholder in there, and I don't want my, you know, my ask about the placeholder is not a.
So Mike Gregor's not saying we should have an override.
I'm not, yeah, Mike Gregor's not saying that we should definitively have an override in order to support it. I'm just saying that, uh, we should operationally put something in there to allow the option, because it can be removed.
Was it on this?
Yeah.
For the fire.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the ask. We went, we talked about four, two, one.
You're up.
Uh, yeah, all over.
For some reason, it's true.
Anything, uh, one plus, the ask was for four.
I already had a vote with, so.
Did we get a year-over-year kind of view of the fire, like, what the FTEs have grown over the last ten years?
About years.
You saying it?
Believe in, in the past, I think, but she said, maybe six years ago, seven years ago, they got one career. Fire. And since they dawned, since they dawned to a career, a combination.
But you're saying, what's, what's the growth, like, like, what's been our full, full-time headcount year-over-year for ten years?
Yes. And how is, and how is that tracking this kind of population and structure?
Well, the conversation was that ca- capacity is, capacity and demand are out of whack.
I, I want data.
Yeah. They, they had, they, they, he talked about the, the details in the presentation.
Was there, but was there?
No.
That, that's not.
Yeah, there's no, because it was hard to. And with the regionalization and other support, right, it's hard to say exactly what. Hard data would be, I think that it was more about NFPA rules and safety and overtime requirements. And in order to have things be appropriately staffed for safety reasons, they're now looking to almost force people to come in on overtime.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so it's, you have to have uncertain people there, whether there's a fire or an emergency or not. Right, and we're not staffing it at the level that's required in order to support the emergencies should they happen.
I thi- I think there's, um. The anecd- there's a need. The question, how much and how soon, based on mutual aid, on call, does that mix look like? More of an unknown, so I think the data asked was asked, even in that meeting, we said, what are the, what are the data start look like? And what's the, what's your vision and your sort of multi-year plan, which kind of talked to, to budget forecasts.
Right.
So I think that's work to be done.
Yeah.
So.
It, it helps to tell the story and explain, right?
Right, definitely.
Uh, uh, but I think one of the things that stood out to me with during the presentation was, he kept mentioning to be staffed according to the guidelines. Call it.
Way off.
He was twenty-one. And the four halves will bring us to sixteen, is that correct?
But, yeah.
Four hundred and sixteen, sorry?
It would be eleven.
So I guess the point of making is that we would still be quite, even with the four, which I thought was, would still be under what's the, the government.
But I don't think, I absolutely, that's what we heard. But I think, you think about the, unfortunately, we had, there was an incident Saturday, house fire, structural fire. And he also said, you need, need fifteen onsite, or something like that. Well, some of that fifteen is going to be made up by, by mutual aid, right? And, and it, yeah, exactly, so, so I think the challenge for a town like Menden is to figure out how do we regionally support each other in a way that if we all staff to the federal levels they talked about.
Oh, yeah.
Would be completely over, over capacity.
Yeah.
So, but we've got to sit down and look at the data to say, how and if can we. You know, it's public safety, so I want, but, but if you look at any call center out there. You don't staff to the peak of the valleys, you're, you know, you're managing, right? So same idea is, we've got to understand mutual aid, on-call, and full-time work, you know, resource mix.
Yeah, and we don't ever want to be the, the weak link in that.
Yeah, to me, the two-in, two-out thing, that was the learning thing for me, and then we have two on-call, so if we don't want to, do we want to leave the fire station not covered?
Yeah.
No, so.
And, and capacity versus demand, you're not coming in, like, it's not a normal job where I'm not gonna come in and say, well, I've got two fires that I'm gonna go put out today, right? And I'm gonna have three heart attacks I've got to go take care of today, right? Um, so like, capacity versus demand. Um, so like, capacity versus demand is totally random and completely unable to plan for.
Well, but you, you.
I, I, I think it's this agenda item that I asked for, that's more what I want, I want, I want the data and understand work towards a, something that we can speak to if you want to do for large increases. I mean, in my mind, I walked out of that saying, we should incrementally grow the fire department. If we can squeeze one in, that was the first presentation I think we had, I think, could we do one? I don't know, maybe. Can we do four? Probably not, not without, oh, an override, right?
Yeah.
And then the question would be, well, do we do an override until we fully understand? You know, how best do we staff the fire department, holistically? I don't know.
Oh, yeah, uh, going for an override is a massive ask and we need to have a lot more discussion on the value of that to understand that better.
We wouldn't want to do it for just a single department. We'd want to look across the town for going for an override.
Well, I think on Tuesday, to your point, that we're gonna have a view, a consolidated view of what is the town looking for in our most, our, our largest class center, which is people, right? And you would think that that's gonna give us a view of in the next three to five years, this staffing level is something we should maybe try to reach, you know?
Yeah.
I also think it may be useful to look backwards as well, to see kind of where we've been.
Mm-hmm.
And to where we're going, right?
And even, even the types of calls in terms, I understand what Mike was saying. But I asked the question, well, how many, how many times are we getting multiple calls overlapping? Right? You know, just, just statistically, you could look at it and say you don't want to bank on it, but you've got a sense for, you know, like, what the frequency looks like.
So in twenty twenty-four, we received a mutual aid ambulance, which means our folks were, you know.
Doing something else, yeah.
Exactly. We received a mutual aid ambulance thirty-seven times, um, which um had a BLS, so basic life, um, life support billing, um revenue associated with it, which we did not, so lost, not lost directly, but uncollected, of fifty-two thousand dollars and ninety thousand dollars in ALS to bill more revenue. So, you know, a hundred and forty-two, almost a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of revenue, uh, because our fellows were doing something else, which is roughly, you know, the base salary to mark out as per usual.
But when you.
We're also collecting.
I, 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 yes. See, that's interesting, but I'd want to dig into those numbers because I say to myself, if we have one ambulance on call.
So that would, would have required two ambulances.
Right.
Something, yeah.
Yeah.
It would have still been, you know, we I want to say like bottom line negative for us. It would have been a positive for us revenue wise, which makes us want to have a second ambulance on, but that's that's what the, you know, the, the deal call was, at least on an ending side.
Mm-hmm. And I'd say, I'm assuming our medical is, you know, what's the ratio of a medical to fire calls, right? I, I, I'm not, I look, that's a, a question I would ask, right? You don't need to look it up because we're way up.
Yeah. It was in the presentation.
But I think when you're coming in asking for four FTEs, this is the kind of data that you need to be.
Right.
The other thing is that this district here would not be the best data duty here. It's pretty obvious with the school.
Uh, yeah, there are way too many asks and, uh, yeah, we can't do them all. And again, uh, I am not advocating that we should be putting in place an operational over.
Decision. Person, but like, but forgetting to like include it, right?
Right, yeah.
We want to make the decision intentionally whether to do it, not just.
Not just, oh, well, yeah. We didn't get it in the warrant, so we were gonna do it, sorry, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
You know what happens too, is you get to, to certain policies against you. Well, I'm gonna go from school, not for fire, I'm gonna in other words, you will get people that will do that.
Well, yeah, school versus town is but a, a massive problem since I've arrived here, so, yeah.
Not a, not a major issue.
Yeah. Sorry, the, the.
Assuming that we're gonna talk about this again, after warrant again next week?
Yes, so the the email that I got from the general bylaw review committee vice chair was to say that the best password, path forward on their bylaws would be a um a guarantee that you reopen the warrant to add to their, um, to other requests, rather than a placeholder for like so I had three placeholders, um there may be a, a.
Again, they just say like which bylaw it is.
All right, that's right.
Yeah.
I know, I hope to have that finished tomorrow, um, and I don't, I don't think there will be citizen petitions capital, we don't have any kind of, unless you all know about something. So I don't think somebody's gonna walk in tomorrow, um, and most folks have found yourself. So I don't see a lot of movement between here and what's also gonna be the, yeah, peace day. Uh, what I will do is rearrange it in a way that I think makes sense, makes fluid sense. Are, is there any interest in a consent agenda again, like we did at a special town meeting?
We are, is there?
Sorry?
How many articles do we have?
Thirty-five.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. One hundred percent. Um, I think one of the bylaw articles will probably be around uh the FinCom bylaw, uh the chair reached out and wanted to have a conversation and set up a meeting, so.
And then one will be around fixing section two of, of, uh, the annual town election, um, if the verbiage doesn't make sense with how that we change section one by the time we, so we just and there will be one on, um right now, if, uh the purchasing threshold of something costs more than like fifty dollars originally, it's the surplus by this board. State statute, I'm gonna forget, but it's or it's magnitude lagers, like five thousand dollars, the department head can just surplus it, so I think they're gonna five hundred dollars, thousand dollars, something in the middle there, but we don't want to come to seventy-five dollar, whatever tapped gift boards. And as folks are just not doing that, except monitor, it doesn't work very strongly, I don't get any surplus, so just try to make sure our actions conform with the bylaw.
Yeah.
Another, another possible bylaw change is about the land use committee, because that, that it's in our bylaws about what the land use committee does, and that was written before CPA money, so there are things in there that are, that, uh, basically CPA covers at this point, so it doesn't like it's, uh, same with the town to be doing these things, which now we're doing because of CPA, so like, yeah. There are a few ways that it should be updated, because I think it's like seventeen years old or something like that. So I know about that from the land use committee meetings. So we can just guess all of the ones that will be on here if we make the place.
So just ask it to, based on.
I mean, we certainly have reopened the warrant before.
And.
Would it, would it be your preference to have the school questions at the beginning or the end?
Think.
It's gonna drag a lot of attendance. We put them at the beginning and.
Do you want to take care of?
Yeah.
We can still rearrange after, right?
Yeah, and the moderator.
Uh, out of order, yes.
We can maybe check with the moderator about his opinion about this, yeah.
That's, that's a tough one.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I'm sort of inclined to have it be earlier.
I was thinking earlier, too.
Just because.
Just to get.
There aren't going to be. Aren't gonna be able to make it through the whole thing and like.
Maybe put it at the end, it seems like it's the biggest question, so it's like you're.
You're exactly. Okay.
You know, it's the anticipation.
Yeah.
More people should be exposed to town meeting who may not usually have gone. And then we should make it so exciting that they want to come back.
Yes.
Keep teasing those last two hours.
That's right.
Yeah, discussing the flood.
Will read the whole.
So that's all I have on.
So. I, I mean, so we have, uh, next meetings that will wait, we, we have like another joint meeting of uh FinCom and Select Board, March eighteenth, so Tuesday.
Yeah.
I'm assuming six-thirty, our usual. And then there had been some question about whether the Select Board would also have regular meeting on the night, so I guess it fits with the town life stuff.
So it's, you have some stuff, but I think maybe we do twenty-six, which will be really after.
It's a cycle.
And then April has five Wednesdays, so if instead of being the first and the third, it's the second and the fourth. I would, I think it would be golfing between meetings, unless.
I'd rather keep the first and third for consistency. I mean, if, if we get back on track, that would probably be good.
So first and third would then be April second and April sixteenth. Um, and then, so that wouldn't be a scheduled meeting between April sixteenth and town meeting?
That might be a reason for the second.
Yeah, I think so.
So then that would be the ninth and the twenty-third. So that would be.
I, uh, I mean, another, another, I guess, question would be, when would finance committee want to have your hearing because actually, we want to be at that also, so that would be adding another meeting.
Um, I typically like to have it as late as physically possible to allow the constant amount of changes that happen on the warrant articles from all the committees to settle down. So the first year we did it, it was like, I felt like we had to meet six times because numbers kept changing, but.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. So.
April twenty-ninth, sixteen.
Yeah, I, I would like to keep it Tuesdays, and if that's the latest, then I, I will say tend to leave.
No constraint.
I looked into this to make sure there wasn't, you know, yeah, the schools are required to have a budget hearing forty-five days before the first town meeting, um, which is why their budget hearing is just prepared Monday. Uh, we're in the middle of that, so we just have to have a location in fast town meeting.
And sometimes it's actually been the same day out.
Uh, yeah, we have voted on articles thirty minutes before it starts, so.
Okay. Okay, so you're expecting that in the for the, the hearing?
Yeah, they'll, any objections? April twenty-ninth, the Tuesday before town meeting, we will have our budget hearing, uh, and we will vote on, uh, sorry, we'll have the, um.
We need to warn.
Yeah, we will, we'll vote on the warrant. We'll also have the budget hearing. No, we're voting on the budget on Tuesday, so that's the, the budget hearing.
Is it, is it the budget hearing? It's not actually.
Yeah.
It's not actually, I guess, you don't have to.
No, it's.
Okay, it's just a vote, I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
So we are, you're, we're gonna vote on Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm just going with the historical, what we've called that meeting. Um, so on Tuesday, the eighteenth, uh, we will vote on recommendation of the budget. April twenty-ninth, we will vote on recommendations for the warrant.
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah, yeah. All right. All right, so then I just, but, so the expectation is we have a either a small number, regular Select Board things for Tuesday, are there some? And then most of them would be put off until
six.
Till the, okay, till March fifty-six.
Uh, I, I don't, I'll, we can check tomorrow what I've got for the next Select Board meeting. I don't believe it's necessary to.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess we don't have the whole Select Board here, but, so we're looking at the twenty-six? If that works for.
Yeah.
That will be for.
Yeah, I think Wednesdays are fun.
So then maybe, and then maybe we can revisit the April meetings when we have everything here.
Yeah, so the ninth and the twenty-third, we can, the every other cadence. And then then how it may set up, which is the first Wednesday, and then we'll keep you on the every other week cadence.
FinCom next Tuesday, current meeting, then on the twenty-ninth, right?
Yeah. And if there's anything we need to meet about in between then I will either schedule it or somebody wants to let me know that there's a topic we're gonna, but.
Anything else from Select Board?
Get a motion to close FinCom?
Hello. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Hey, aye. Run, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Craig, aye.
Hi, Ginsai.
Billy had that, aye.
FinCom's closed ten thirty-five PM. Thank you, folks.
First, the chairman, second. Aye.
All right, great, uh, meeting.